There we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting into order. Welcome to our February 6, 2023 Commissioners Meeting. The first item tonight is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. As always, we'll invite the audience, if there's someone in the audience that would like to come up and lead us in an invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening, they're welcome to do so. Seeing no one jump up at that, I'll throw it over to Commissioner Owen Etheridge this evening.
Well, let's pray. Father, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to gather as free men and women to discuss the nature of business before Currituck County. We ask you to continue your blessings on our great land, protect our men and women as they defend our country around the globe. Be with us, Father, as we go through tonight. Give us the wisdom and the guidance as we make decisions necessary to improve the quality of life of Currituck County. All these blessings we ask in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Owen. All right. Next, we have our ethics awareness and conflict of interest statement. I'll turn it over to our county attorney this evening for that.
All right. Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234, 153A-340G, or 168-388E2. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
I guess I will speak up. I checked my QuickBooks before I came to the meeting tonight, and in 2022, I know Allied Properties is on here for an agenda. I bush-hogged two lots for him and did $300 worth of business in 2022. Obviously, I had expenses in that, so it wasn't like a $300 profit. Probably cost me about $220, $210, so 80 to 90 bucks was raw profit. So if that's a, I just wanted to disclose that.
Does that present a problem for a conflict of interest?
Which is that? Which matters?
Allied Properties and the grocery store, or the commercial.
Or commercial.
I know it's a different, it's a different north-south development, but I know Allied Properties is the owner of it, so I'm disclosing that.
Okay. I don't think that it would really rise to the level.
I haven't done any work at Flora, don't plan to, or any of that, so.
I don't, in my opinion, I don't think it would rise to the level of a conflict of interest.
Okay. I just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cord. All right. Next up is the approval of the agenda, but before I call for that, just want to mention that Commissioner Beaumont is not here tonight. He called me a little bit ago and is under the weather, so I hope he feels better, and we'll see him at our next meeting. And with that, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight from anybody? Seeing none, can I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval of the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. Next up is public comment. I will remind anyone that wants to come up and speak tonight to limit their comments to three minutes. We'll have a light set up here for you to let you know as you're moving through your time. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? You can roam free on any subject if you'd like to. Seeing none, then I will close public comment, and we will jump into Commissioners' reports. I wrote a book for tonight's meeting. I'm going to apologize to the board and to the audience. It's going to take a little while to go through this. Lot going on in the beginning of 2023 this year. This past Thursday, we had a group, our second group of residents, and I'm probably going to steal a little thunder from the county manager, but we had a Citizens Academy. We've only had one of those so far, and this was our second go-around at that, and we were just shy of 30 people in attendance. I stopped in just to say hello and thank them for coming out that evening, and it was interesting to see that most people were either two, somewhere between living here for a couple years or for the last up to 10 years, but I don't believe anybody in the group was actually a lifetime resident of the county. It was all people that were newly here. Interesting to see, but if, and if you're a naysayer, you probably say, that's to be expected, and it's our fault for building so many houses here in Currituck County late. But I will remind everyone that this board actually didn't approve most of the houses that have been built in the last several years. It was from previous stuff that happened when the economy was much slower, and it just happened to rush in on us. So. One of the things that is interesting about that, though, one of the, one of the things that the board and previous boards have talked about is the need for rooftops in this county. We've had, a lot of people have interest in having another grocery store. We had that actually on the agenda tonight to possibly have another grocery store come into northern Currituck and Mayock and offer another, other products and more shopping. And that, that only happened because we had more people here. But now that we've hit that threshold, I'm going to talk about some stuff that will, will probably slow that down a little bit as we move through the coming year. The next day, Friday, we had our annual retreat. We talked about everything from beach nourishment to fire safety, how much it's going to cost to build fire trucks, buy new fire trucks, new ambulances, you name it. And over the next few months, we'll be going into our budget process. We're, we're at a precipice as far as the county goes in our tax rate. There's a lot of hard decisions that are going to have to be made, and we're going to have to make those decisions. And just for instance, as a for instance, we need to replace two fire trucks a year for the next five to seven years to get our fleet replaced. That's two cent of tax every single year just to, just to cover the cost of a fire truck. It takes two years to build a fire truck, so it's not an instant thing. It takes quite a bit of time. The fleet that we have now is 15 to 20 years old, and some of the trucks are even older than that. So as we look through our capital needs for this county and what's going on, we're going to have to plan for that eventuality. The school came up to us, and they have capital improvement needs on their buildings, and they're working on getting us, that list cleaned up, finalized, and hopefully slimmed down a little bit for what they bring us, and we'll have to work through that. We do have to build a new elementary school. That was not unexpected. We had planned on that. What we hadn't planned on was the actual amount of money it would cost to build a new school. It went from 25 to 28 million to somewhere in the $50 million range. It basically doubled thanks to the world we're in. This building we're sitting in is actually needing all the windows replaced. Right behind me, you can see the trims going on the window. They're all leaking. So there's a lot of windows in this building. That's going to be a significant expense to come in here and do that. I'm letting everyone know this because of the decisions we have to make. And so going forward, I will be doing some short videos. I did these during COVID and probably do some podcasts and things of that nature to help explain what we're having to go through, because it doesn't always come out in the meetings as we work our way through the agendas and the budget process. So I'm going to do my best to help people understand the pressures that we have on our county, the costs that are coming in. Everyone sees this every day in their own wallets as they have to go to the grocery store or buy just about anything. I mentioned it earlier, but one of the things, over my last six years of being a commissioner, I've learned an incredible amount from, from our staff, from classes we go to, from the history, from previous board members like Owen, who's been around for a lot of stuff that's going on. So, and reflecting on that time and deciding whether or not I may run again. I'm not going to be here forever, nor should anyone be up here forever. I began thinking about these things and realized that this board has not so much put its mark on this county, that in listening to my fellow board members and comments that they've made, that, that there were things that we weren't addressing. We inherited what other board's visions for this county were, but we haven't done anything that said what our vision for this county is. And so I've met individually with every single commissioner and spent anywhere from an hour to, I think, two and a half or three hours at Owen's house going down memory lane and, and talked about these things. So I put them all together and found out, at the end of the day, we were all kind of on the same path. We just hadn't got together and really seen where those paths intersected and where they were going to lead. So over the coming weeks, I plan on meeting with county staff and putting those ideas together with our planning staff so that they can bring a cohesive set of ideas to us to look at and talk about when we go forward. Kitty has mentioned for six to 10, 20 years to do one acre minimum lot sizes. That is something that I think we all feel would be, would be a good conversation to have right now, for instance. The question is, how do you do it? So we have to work through density and things of those nature as, as we talk about that. Looking at ag, for instance, you know, it's a, it's a three unit per acre, or three acres per unit, but then there's density. If you're in full service, you can go down to a third of an acre and cram all the houses in one spot. Is that what you want an ag area to look like? In my opinion, I do not. But we have to work through that as a board and decide those things. Do we build setbacks in so they have to be further back from the road? Laurel Woods right down the street here is a, is a prime example of how to set something back from the road so that it's not right in your face as you're driving by. People talk about having open vistas and how much they like them, and that's one of the things that, that drew them to Currituck County. So how do we keep those things in, in certain areas of the county and slow down development a little bit while we catch our breath, build a new school, do new infrastructure for sewage system in Mayock? We have quite a few businesses that are interested in coming here, and those all came because of rooftops. Again, it allowed them to look at the model here, the average income, household income, and say, I want to go there. They create jobs and a better tax base and help pay for all these things that we have to deal with. Another area we've talked about is where to go when the bridge lands. Years ago, people talked about doing something down at Idlet. That's going to be the terminus of the bridge, the Mid-Currituck Bridge. We'll have a decision on the court case on that, hopefully here in the near future. Hopefully, it's very favorable for us so that we can finally get that 30 to 50-year project moving forward and not turn it to a 50-year project. But that begs the question, what happens in the area? And so I've met with the commissioners to talk about looking at where we should incorporate areas to deal with that, because if the bridge gets built, or when it gets built, we're going to have businesses relocate there. We've seen it at the south end of our county. It's all in support of the beach, so businesses are going to move over here. Real estate's cheaper, housing will be cheaper. So looking at GB, general business, in that area, and how do we do that? We don't have hardly any GB areas with access to a water for a hotel or resort, for instance, if someone wanted to do one on the mainland. We've been trying to get that built for decades, probably, and we need to give them the opportunities to actually do those things. Let's see here. MXR. We hear a lot about MXR, mixed residential use. As a matter of fact, we have a language change tonight on mixed residential use. Several months ago, we had a developer come in and want to change that up a little bit, and what they had was a good idea. We have found, though, that developers are using MXR to get a higher density, but we're not actually seeing the commercial component of that. And mixed residential, that's exactly what it is. It has residences in the back, commercial up front. So we haven't seen a lot of that commercial happen or come to fruition. Now, it may be because we didn't have sewage. It may be because they located in an area where it wouldn't support commercial right now. So we need to have a bigger discussion about where MXR and does it fit here exactly? It makes sense in areas like Chesapeake or Virginia Beach where you have a lot of neighborhoods, little bitty postage stamp lots, and there's a lot of people there, so you can have mom and pop shops, restaurants, hair salons, whatever in those areas. So that's a discussion we're going to have going forward and, and work that out. And so over the next coming months, you'll see that, see us have meetings on all these things and bring that stuff before you eventually for a change, hopefully. I planned on jumping into some other stuff as well. We had a meeting Friday and Saturday, as I said, our annual retreat. There's been a post about beach nourishment put up that claimed that we would be taxing the mainland if we did beach nourishment on the beach. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the representative for the Corolla District and the 4x4, Knott's Island. And there, in no way, shape, or form, would anybody, I think, on this board tax the people on the mainland if we decided to do beach nourishment. We all view it as a problem over there, and in fact, most beach communities handle it that way. So if you live on the beach and we decide we want to push sand on the beach or pump sand on the beach or any of those things, occupancy tax is there to help with some of that burden, but some of that burden's also going to pass to the people that live there, and especially those that own the most valuable properties, which are the oceanfront homes. I've talked to many homeowners, and they understand this, and they're willing for us to do that to protect their investment. Moreover, it's important that we protect their investment and our investment in our county beaches. Our county beaches are our main attraction to tourism. The beach equates to 50% of the tax rate that comes in on property tax. A huge amount of sales tax is also generated from the beach. All of those things matter greatly to you on the mainland. And the reason they matter so much is because of that 50% of tax that comes in. If we lose that, taxes over here go up exponentially. They pay for our schools, our fire departments, all these other things, but they don't need a lot of those services. As a matter of fact, they have paid fire and EMS over there, but they pay for the fire department. So please disregard, if you've read that article or you see that, that article come out, some of the stuff in it was taken way out of context, and in no way is that true. Lastly, I just want to say this Snowden family, you're in our thoughts and prayers. Everyone knows them. They are a prominent part of this county's history and continued history. With that, I will, I will sign off and hand it over to you. I've given enough of my time this evening. Thank you all.
I too want to convey my condolences to Barbara Snowden and her family. I taught with Barbara for many years at Currituck County High School, and she and her husband are pillars of this community. Wilson Snowden had just unrecoverable knowledge. I remember when we had our historic tour, historic Holmes tour last fall, stopping in at his store and just listening to his stories, and it saddens me to know that, that history, that oral history has been lost. But I know his knowledge and his stories will live on. They've been captured in many forms. One, Barbara's book that she helped write, the book about Currituck County and the Holmes is a treasure. And I just pray that God surrounds that family and helps them through this difficult time. I would also like to thank staff for our retreat. They just are dedicated and do so much hard work behind the scenes to make this retreat a success. I want them to know that I see them. I appreciate all they do, and I appreciate all they do for Currituck County. And finally, February is Heart Health Month. There's a lot of things that go around about heart health, but one of the things that people often overlook about heart health is surrounding the holiday Valentine's Day. It's a tough holiday for a lot of people. It hurts the hearts of many people who have lost loved ones in the past year, and I ask that if you know somebody in that situation, reach out to them on that day. Give them a call, send them a text, get them a card. It's a difficult month. It's a difficult time for many people, and I don't want that to be overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Ms. Jarvis said, February is American Heart Health Month. It's a time for people to focus on their cardiovascular health. We don't realize it, but every year, 805,000 Americans die from a heart attack, and it's been used this time of the year for people to look at an opportunity to look at your habits, the foods you eat, the supplements you take, so you can take care of your heart. And I too would also like to thank our staff for our retreat. I think it was a wonderful time. There was a lot of information shared with us that we can all use. And also, our, my condolences to Barbara Snowden and her family. They will surely, she, Mr. Snowden will surely be missed in our county. Thank you.
Commissioner Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You did cover a lot of stuff, and I appreciate that. I know our citizens as well do. Couple things from that, I guess, retreat we had was, I don't know if the citizens understand, but Currituck County has no debt. We've been financially sound in taking care of pay-as-we-go and being good stewards of how we spend and keeping taxes low. And with that, the county, as I said, is debt, again, no debt, so, which is a good thing. Most, I'd say almost all your counties in the state of North Carolina probably have some sort of debt, but Currituck County has done a good job with that. That's why we've always had good financial reports in the state. We turn our audits, and I congratulate our, our financial department, Sandra, for that, and their staff for, for doing a great job for the county. But I also want to mention, too, that there was, the fire departments, you always hear if there's a county that's going toward a paid fire department. This, this board is not discussing a paid fire department. The volunteers do a fantastic job out there. We support, and we're doing everything we can to make sure our volunteer fire departments stay intact and have what they need to, to take care of our citizens out there. We want them to be successful. We're there for them. If this county had to go to a paid fire department, the citizens don't even want to know what the cost of that would be in a tax increase. So there's no, we're not even looking to do in that at this point. And as far as the passing of Wilson Snowden, back in the 80s, Mr. Snowden was, did serve a term as commissioner, and I believe three out of the four years, he was actually the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, and did a great job. And I think I'll let some other commissioners talk a little bit about that more, but he was also a fire chief for Crawford for years, did a great job there. And Mr. Snowden was an instrumental part of getting our boat museum together and helping with history of the boat museum with providing boats, and he's part of the documentary in there. So, and Mrs. Snowden was a high school teacher of mine back in the day, and that family, and my heart goes out to the Snowden family and my condolences to the passing of Wilson Snowden. Again, he's going to be missed on the wealth and knowledge of the county. And with that, I'll pass it on to the next commissioner. Thank you.
All right. What do you, Mr. Cord, what you got this evening?
All right. I got a few things. First off, to, like I said, Ms. Snowden, Barbara and her daughter Beth, prayers to them. I went to school with her daughter. She graduated with my sister Beth. Ms. Snowden I had as a teacher twice. I had her for North Carolina History, and then I had her for Currituck History. The first year that they ever taught that, I was in the first class. And I always joked with Ms. Snowden and say I was her favorite student. She just replies of, I was one of her students, so. But Ms. Snowden would get a kick out of that. So they're super people. Every morning, I get fuel at the McShale, as everybody calls it, and Wilson's always in there, and I go in to pay for my fuel. And it was a 20-minute longer day of what was, which I didn't mind. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Snowden. They're good people. He's knowledgeable. He volunteered so many hours to this county. And just, I mean, like I said, they're pillars of the community. They're really, really good people. So I pray for Barbara and her daughter Beth that everything, you know, goes well for them. And like I said, Wilson was top-notch, as good as they come. I just have a bunch of things with different dates on here that we've done. I want to give huge commend to the Mayock Women's Club. We did a cleanup on Tulsa Creek Road. I love on Facebook, people just post negative stuff and all the time. They don't post a lot of positive stuff sometimes, but we had, the Mayock Women's Club spearheaded it. Janet Rose was there. We had about right at two dozen people, and we covered, Tulsa Creek Road is 10 miles long from the end of it to the railroad tracks. We covered right at eight miles of it and got 81 bags of trash. 81 bags of trash. That's astronomical amount. And like I said, there was, the Women's Club, I believe, had about 13 people there in attendance, as well as Robert Miles got the Barco Mart. Ike and Rick own that now, and Coin Jock, so give them a little plug. They donated some pizzas to everybody that worked. Everybody was out there for about an hour and a half to two hours. So that was a nice event. It was heavily attended. So we were close to getting the whole road. If we had about 10 more volunteers, we would have gotten the whole road. Next, the, I was out of town last week. My perfect attendance for my first four years was, was broken on Friday. It would have caused problems at my house. So I missed the first day of the retreat. I may be a big guy, but I don't challenge my wife. So Saturday, I was here. I left at like 3:50 in the morning from the mountains to get here in the morning. So like I said, that kind of broke up my perfect attendance for meetings, but it was a good, the staff did an awesome job with everything from top to bottom of organizing, went over a lot of stuff. And like Chairman White said about the, the housing, it's funny, because this board right here sits up here, all of us, we get accused of everything, you know, on the different houses. If a house goes up on Tulsa Creek Road, it's our fault, you know, and it may have been approved in 99, you know? So, but I just wanted to throw that out there. The, the other thing far as the Citizens Academy, I know last time, it was, it was a lot smaller group, but it was a great group. I participated the night for the sheriff's office myself and Captain Smith. They asked, I mean, get your questions out, buddy. They asked some really good, serious, like when you're helping teach with driver's ed, that's like the worst you would ever want to do, because you'd have a 15-year-old in there asking you questions and trying to make you look dumb. Not that they're doing that, but it's like, you better be, know your stuff. So, but the staff does a great job on that, too, and it really lets people know what's going on, because not everything on the Mayock page is true. I mean, I don't know if everybody knows that, but I just wanted to put that out there. So I would like to say one other thing, too, far as the, the incident that we had on the 31st of 2023 reference, we have chases all the time that come through this county, and I know this from the sheriff's office, because I'm the patrol lieutenant. If it happens on patrol from, I'm like 7-Eleven. If it happens on patrol, I know about it. I'm getting a text or a page. So I was out of town, and I was getting them. I was like, oh my gosh. Well, I have my computer with me, so I cut it on. The guys, our guys took over a chase, an individual, and I'm not going to go into to stuff. It was a really, really tough, dangerous situation. They did an awesome job. There was guys out there all night long containing an area for the safety. And the thing where I'm going to go on the, kudos to them, to the other agencies that assisted. I was fixing the spike strips on the truck that they got the tires on when, when they wrecked the vehicle. We, we got another one on a chase where they spiked the tires to stop the chase, to avoid somebody getting hurt, as well as, you know, whoever. But all the agencies together, they got there and just did a great, and we didn't quit. I will tell you this, our sheriff, Matt Biker, our chief deputy, Jeff Walker, you're going to work. I mean, like I said, they are those guys. They're going to work right beside you. So our guys stayed all night and, like I said, and then the next morning, got the guy in the morning and was taken into custody. There was a little incident, but not too too bad. I'm sure people read it in the paper. But the one thing is, like, far as the schools and the safeties, we have SROs at the high school. We have SROs at NAP, early college. We have SROs at the middle school. Those guys don't leave. If they wanted to get lunch, they're not allowed to leave. Somebody has to sit there. Somebody has to bring them lunch. We have special events at schools, a deputy's there. Our elementary schools, we don't have deputies there at all times, but we have, like today, I mean, we typically, even administration, which I'm part of that, or the civil process guys, the patrol guys, the detectives, somebody's going to a school every day. Every elementary school was checked multiple times. The guys do a great job. That morning, the comments where the school board was taking hits, the superintendent was taking hits. If you think it's unsafe for your kid to go to school, just keep him home. We had extra deputies, our guys, and I would like to commend our guys for that, too. I looked on the computer. I was four hours away, and I look on the computer, and I see all these units popping up, all these different numbers. It's not their day to work. A dozen of them came out to help. The next day, I see all these extra units. We had extra presence at the elementary school, specifically Griggs, Jarvisburg area, just for that reason. for that reason. So where people go online, and if you don't know the whole thing, when you type on social media on your phone or your computer, whatever it is, that's out there. So you can delete it maybe two hours later, and you made your comment or whatever. But if, you know, the school staff, the sheriff's office, the superintendent, the schools were safe. We were not going to put any kid in unharmed's way at the school. Some of the comments, what I read, and I just really wanted to say, like, hey, if you're a parent, you know, you could keep your kid at home, you know, you don't have to send them if you felt it wasn't safe. But everybody did a great job on that. That's not the only one. There's so many other ones that people in this room don't know about. It's a daily thing. So shout out to all the guys. I wasn't there, did look at it on the computer, but shout out to all the guys that did all the stuff and kept people safe, because it's every day. And like I said, the fire department, we had a meeting two weeks ago with the volunteers. There was some lack of communication, and the chiefs that attended that we had set up. And we had a great meeting where we, there were some issues on our end, and there were some issues on their end. And two grown adults get together. And like I said, those guys, I see it every day. I see them respond to wrecks. I see them respond to fires. I'm very thankful that they're there. They do an awesome job. Nobody's perfect, but they do a good job. And we got some things that were, some issues addressed and moved forward, and it was good for them to do that. I got a couple more things. Let me look at my list and make sure I checked off. The, like I said, thanks again to the staff. If you've got an issue with something, somebody that works here is, you know, if it's five o'clock, they're not leaving, because it's the end of the day, they're going to help you, you know? Five fifteen, they might be ready to go, but they're, they're going to help you. I mean, you always are going to get help. So like I said, I'm thankful, when I crossed that line Saturday morning, it was about seven fifty, to come to the retreat meeting, I was so happy to be in Currituck County. Hope my wife's not watching this. But I mean, I had a good time being away for a week, but I was so happy to be home, to sleep in my bed.
I will tell your wife.
That's the only person I'm afraid of. But like I said, it was, and I mean, like I said, it was nice to get away. We were, you know, for six days, whatever. But like I said, I'm glad to be home. We live in a great place, where Bob, the chairman touched on, you know, we have it good here. I mean, compared to neighboring counties, we have great volunteers, you know, that just do so much in this county. One just walked, look at Tamara right there, our tourism director. Her staff is, I mean, you, I'll put her staff up against anybody. They do a great job. And to, Happy Valentine's Day next week to anybody, to the ladies, Happy Valentine's. Don't give me a gift this year. Don't feel obligated. But now, on the real, though, like I said, it is tough, like you said, for people with, like, missing, the holidays hit them, you know, when Christmas time, birthdays, Valentine's Day, of people missing their loved ones. So like I said, be kind. And not everything on social media is true. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. I never would have guessed you were deputy, by the way. I don't think anyone knew that. All right, Owen, good luck following that up.
I'll be here all week. Like the other commissioners, our condolences go out to Wilson Snowden's family, Ms. Barbara. I've known Wilson all my life and always enjoyed sitting down, talking with him, because he had a lot of history and a lot of the knowledge of what those, what his board did back in nineteen eighties. I was telling Chairman White, when he was first elected, he became chairman the very first night he was commissioner. And the first motion he ever made was to fire the entire county staff. And it didn't get a second, but it did get attention of a lot of people. And I was told that they'd never seen so many people arrive to work on time, not that they don't arrive to work on time. But it got people's attention that he was serious about doing what was best for Currituck County. I too want to thank the staff for the retreat this past week. We, I felt like had a very productive staff. We talked about a lot of things, and I was encouraged to hear Chairman White and his opening remarks talk about the, what we're going to be looking at in terms of reducing lots or increasing lot sizes in order to reduce the density. And that's something I know there's been a hot topic on social media. So just give us some time, and we'll get to it. And I want to read an email I got from a Corolla resident, Chairman White, about the recent water main break that was over there. And it's good news. Commissioner, on Tuesday evening's walk in Corolla's Section F, we noticed water pooling from a residential construction site. A phone call was made to the Currituck County Water Department, which promptly dispatched a team to run the diagnostics and find the leak. Working until 2:00 a.m., this army of professionals remedied the matter and had our community back as good as new. Please cite and provide commend, recommendation for Cody's crew and the Currituck County Water Department for their outstanding work. We consider ourselves privileged to have met them. Likewise, we thank God for the work our commissioners perform on behalf of the hard-working, God-fearing citizens of our region. Yours sincerely, Michelle and Eddie Woodhouse. It's not often you get remarks like that, but it is very much appreciated. Not so much about the hard work that we do, but what our staff does, because there has been some water main breaks in the last few weeks, and they have worked very diligently to get water back on. And I certainly appreciate our staff and what they do.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on, we have the county manager's report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you to the board for your attentiveness and direction given during the retreat. I think it was very helpful. It was somewhat a different retreat than we've had in the last number of years, in that we were focused pretty much a hundred percent on budgetary items, because that is a real concern, but also an opportunity for the board in this county as we begin to enter into a new budget process and budget year. So thank you again, and we'll continue the conversation over the next few months. Secondly, I just want to note that on Wednesday, there will be arguments at the North Carolina Court of Appeals in Raleigh in the lawsuit of the Corolla Civic Association versus the county relative to the county's use of occupancy taxes. The county attorney and I will be going. I think the chairman will be attending, and Commissioner Owen Etheridge has also said he will be going. So we'll be going up there to be there in time at nine thirty Wednesday morning to, to listen to the oral arguments and hope to have a positive report to come back to you about the feelings of our lawyers on that matter, and hope to get a favorable decision in the next couple of months on that matter as well. Just one item with regard to Wilson Snowden, I'll just relate this quick story. When I came here in nineteen eighty-nine and experienced my first hurricane, and I didn't really know a whole lot about emergency management, but what seemed to be the method of emergency management then was Wilson Snowden coming from across the street as the hurricane was coming up the coast with his antique barometer, which would be, would be set on a desk in the county manager's office, and recordings thereafter taken to determine what we might expect from the hurricane. That continued to be that process during my first tour of duty here. Now, things, of course, have changed greatly in emergency management, but that's a fond memory of Wilson Snowden and, of course, his commitment to Currituck County. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I think you'd be proud to know you did a great job with your historical comments at the Citizens Academy, going through how North Carolina was formed, how Currituck County was formed, and all that was contained therein. Mr. Megan Morgan, what's up? You're next on the agenda.
Just one, one thing to add. Week before last, I attended the UNC School of Government and County Attorneys Conference. And as always, it was wonderful. They had great topics, one of which I think we are going to implement soon, adding cybersecurity insurance to our IT-related contracts. So I'm trying to get that implemented, along with some other things. So that's it.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have administrative reports. Item one, the resolution supporting career and technical education track diploma. Oh, Mr. O'Neill, popped right up.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just maybe lead in. We have, there's been a working group for several months now that has been putting together a push to get this double high school diploma track for those who are going to university, but those who may be more interested in a technical trade vocational education. This has been something that's been going, been discussed over a good number of years here in Currituck. And finally, the impetus to push this forward has arrived, and I think we've put together a good, a good program. And already, I think we're hearing some good things from our lobbyists in Raleigh about the status of this. But tonight, you've got former county commissioner and representative Paul O'Neill, Dr. Bagwell from College of the Albemarle, and our own Dr. Lutes, Currituck County School Superintendent, who are going to make a presentation establishing what we've done so far and the great need for this type of dual diploma track for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. And, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation tonight. And I just want to tell you guys, thanks for all that you do for the county. It's not easy, but y'all persevere and stay focused, and we appreciate it. So getting to our agenda item tonight, I guess it was probably in 2016 or seventeen, probably seventeen, I was chairman of the College of the Albemarle Board of Trustees. And Dr. Dobney, who was on the school board at that time, approached me, along with Commissioner Mike Payment, Commissioner Mike Hall, and I can't recall who else was in that meeting, but we had a meeting. We had the then Currituck County School Superintendent, along with the College of the Albemarle president. And so we started having discussions about how College of the Albemarle could deliver the career and technical education classes to the students in Currituck County, or vocational training, whichever generation you come from. My generation's vocational training. But we started having those conversations, and our president resigned shortly thereafter, and some other things happened, and it just kind of fell by the wayside. So Dr. Bagwell was hired as our next president at COA, and he and I started having those conversations again about how could COA be integrated more into the Currituck County school systems so that we could deliver the vocational training that some of our students may want, versus going, as Mr. McCree was talking about, there's, used to be a two-track diploma. One was vocational training, and one was, of course, university training. But then they did away with the vocational training track, and it was just everybody was sent to the four-year college. So we started having those conversations, and Dr. Bagwell come from a community college that worked with the local school system, where they provided those classes to the high school students. I said, wow, let's get this going. But of course, when he came, COVID came at the same time. So then again, it got pushed aside and never really made any progress. Well, Governor Easley in the middle of the summer decided not to reappoint me to the College of the Albemarle. So then that kind of sidelined it again when things started opening up. But as fate would have it, Representative Hannig got appointed to Senator Steinberg's seat, and I got appointed to Representative Hannig's seat. So I had a conversation with Senator Hannig about, you know, there needs to be some changes made at the state to make this a viable option. So we put together another group, and Commissioner Payment came, and Commissioner Jarvis, who is Currituck County's representative on College of the Albemarle, and also, we had Chairman Etheridge from the school system, and the two leaders of the respective institutions brought their best staff together. We have a couple of them here from COA. Raise your hands. And of course, we have Ms. Rose here from the school system, Board of Education. So we got together, and we had a couple of meetings. Staff went, and they put together a program to where we think we can get a dual track again of CTE vocational training for our high school students, as well as the college track. And it gives parents and the students an opportunity to make a decision about what's best for that student. Not every student needs to go to college. Not every student needs to be a vocational type of career. So tonight, we have a presentation put together that Dr. Bagwell and Dr. Lutes are going to present, and then at the end, we certainly are going to ask for adoption of that resolution. And I will tell you that Senator Hannig has been working this very hard in Raleigh, and it's basically, everybody's like, wow, bring it forward. We think it's a great idea. We need to diversify the type of education that our students are getting beyond just the one track to college. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lutes and Dr. Bagwell to share some of the information.
Deb?
Is she supposed to have a copy of your?
We'll just roll with the one, we'll roll with the paper copy.
Oh, here she comes. Uh-oh.
I'm not used to being in this seat.
Right. It's a little weird, isn't it?
Little role reversal. Yes, it is. Okay. Thank you for having us this evening. So personalized education, Paul just talked about the importance of a two-track diploma system. So we're going to bring, bring some numbers forth to you, and we'll open up for questions at the end. You're going to see a number there. Five thousand fifty students were enrolled in the K-12. That is not the number that enrolled strictly in our public schools. I did want to point that out. But all of our information throughout this presentation comes from myfuturenc.org. We are fortunate to have them working with districts throughout the state, and that's where we found all of our data and information. Eighty-four percent of ninth graders graduate within four years, and twelve percent of our sixteen-to-twenty-four year olds were not working in 2019. And I want to point out, and I think, and I know that I've heard multiple commissioners here speak to this as well, about the problems we're having getting our young people employed, and where are they at, and what are they doing. And we have got to do more, and we have got to do better.
Thank you again for having us. I'm Jack Bagwell. And I'm not going to read to you. You've got the presentation here, but the, My Future NC folks did today the State of Educational attainment in North Carolina. So I'm going to veer off the presentation a little bit. I'm not sure if you saw that, but I would encourage you, it was a little more than an hour long, and it's exactly aligned with what we're talking about here. Everybody in North Carolina is talking about, we need to do something different. We cannot keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. We have less than about a third of our students that start ninth grade that will finish any type of degree in six years. Will finish any type of degree within six years of graduating from high school. So we've got to look at what we do to align people with careers. How do we make sure that we have individual pathways for students so that they can get started early? One of the things that I heard today is that the schools are now, in North Carolina, are going to be required to do career planning with eighth graders and beyond and renewed every year, and hold each district accountable for that. That's exactly in alignment with what we're talking about here. College of the Albemarle has been at the ready to work with the school here, and we have a great partnership. This is not about what we've done wrong. This is about how we can do better and how we can serve individual students even better. We now have a beautiful facility that you all have helped us to construct and that we share with the county, and we are moving things around. And we are very thankful for our HVAC instructors and some of the things that we have going on in the county. But we can do more. We can do different. We can connect people with the jobs of the future here in Currituck County, and that's what we are about. And the superintendent stole my clicker, so I guess he's clicking for me. So that's okay. Yeah, there we go. I thought I had an assistant there for a moment, but I guess I'm back on my own. It was short-lived. Thank you, though. So, you know, again, we wanted to pick this conversation up. It's been a conversation that's happened in Currituck County, and I think you're in an opportunity to, have an opportunity to lead the state. I had another president from another college up. I was telling them about what we're doing in Currituck. He said, let me know when you get to the next step, because I want to be the second college who works with a district to do this, and I want to go ahead and talk to my senator and make sure we get into some legislation. So we have an opportunity to do something very special here.
As Paul mentioned earlier, one of the, while this conversation started seven years ago, having right people, right seats, right time, very important. ago, having right people, right seats, right time, very important. And so with the help from College of the Albemarle and all these people coming together, we're able to bring those minds and say, all right, how do we align this statewide? Not just make this a regional piece, but how can we make this even bigger? So we took a look at the North Carolina State Board of Education Strategic Plan. Their number one goal is eliminate opportunity gaps and our objective four was to decrease the dropout rate. It also speaks to a sound, basic education for every student, and it speaks to workforce, higher education, and robust civic participation. The current diploma track only really heads kids down one, and that's towards higher education without a very clear view to get in straight to the workforce. Again, the, the state report card is under reform at this point in time so that it, it speaks more to what schools are really doing with kids, not just an A, B, or C, and what does that look like. It's going to require us to do things like track workforce, who goes into workforce, things we should be tracking, things that we should be getting asked by our county commissioners and others. So I look forward to that new report card that is going to be revised and sent out. Which brings us to testing and accountability reform as well. And again, it speaks to civic life, career, or college. But our entire testing program and accountability currently is set up only under the college-bound student.
You all know what we do at College of the Albemarle, but we have programs and businesses and computers. We have college transfer general education, which of course, most folks know, and we're taking good advantage of here in Currituck County. But we also have nursing and allied health. If you've not seen our nurse aide program, CNA, CNA facilities that you helped construct here in the county, it's fantastic, second to none. And we're able to do even more with the schools. First responder, public safety, we have a wonderful program, but we can do more. We can do better. We can do different stuff. Hospitality, public service, et cetera. So we also have continuing ed opportunities. One of the things that we're seeing more and more in colleges, people are more interested, especially adults, especially high school graduates, in short-term training. They want to get to the training and go to work. And we've got to find pathways that allow students to connect with the areas of interest. And they can get started on that in high school and finish it very quickly. One of the areas I'll talk about just briefly before we flip the slide here, we've got to have better pathways to nursing and allied health. And there was a lot of information about that and trying to subsidize that with the colleges. We're going to be under pressure as colleges to expand our pipeline because of the building that we're building in Pasquotank County right now. Hopefully, it'll be completed in the next two, two and a half years. We're going to expand our nursing pipeline by about 30 to 40%. We need that feeder program. We need kids in eighth grade to be thinking about that now. They can come to College of the Albemarle, the number one nursing program in North Carolina repeatedly over the years, and that includes the university partners. They can get out, if they start in high school, get out in two years with us making more than most of our folks are going to be making in their lifetime. And they're going to do that at 20, 21 years of age. But they have to get on the pipeline and we have to connect with the schools early. And we have a video that I think we need help playing. So I'll let that, somebody cue it up.
I think she's, she's on it.
Well, we are in our second year of operation, just beginning our second year of operation in this facility, and it's been a game changer, really. So it's allowed us to do more of our arts and sciences, general education courses in the current building, the public safety building. Of course, we do specialized courses in the annex, but what it did for our regional aviation and technology training centers allow us to convert some space. So we're bringing some trades to this area. We know that HVAC is a dire need on the Outer Banks and in Currituck because of the expansion. So we're bringing that, and our dean and our faculty are working diligently to make sure that we bring some of the technical trades to Currituck to augment what we're already doing. Currituck's one of the fastest-growing counties in North Carolina, one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation per capita. So we are certainly proud and glad and appreciative of having a campus like this in Currituck.
Very important to, to increase educational opportunities for citizens of the county. Currituck is well-known for its strong education system, going back to Joseph Knapp and his, his investment in Currituck County and its educational system. This kind of piggybacks off of the Aviation Technology Training Center and partnership that Currituck County has with College of the Albemarle, a fine facility that we built that has in there training for aviation-related industry. And so this was just a, a natural extension of that ongoing partnership. We felt it also important to bring into Currituck County basic law enforcement training. And we've, we still have some idea, perhaps in the future, of building a fire training facility somewhere on county property in this area to, again, further educational opportunity, but also Currituck's support and respect for emergency responders.
Anything that we do, we try to think central and flexible. So we want to make sure we can pull as many people in as we can to our campuses. And the location of this is perfect for bringing folks from the Outer Banks, from, of course, all over Currituck, Camden, even Elizabeth City, because we are so small as a college that we cannot duplicate or replicate programs everywhere. So we have to be strategic in where we put programs, where we put our campuses, where we put our facilities, where we put our money. And so this was certainly a no-brainer, if you will, for an expansion of our Currituck facility and expansion of our programming here. Because we, again, pulled from Eva and JP Knapp, Early College, the Camden Early College, and of course, the location makes it easy to get to with the road access. I just want to say, as the president of College of the Albemarle, we cannot underestimate the importance of this facility and this partnership with Currituck County. And we're not done yet. So we have other plans, and I know Currituck wants to have a strong community college. They are supportive of College of the Albemarle and the Board of Commissioners and the citizens. We could not be more thankful to you all for the support that you provided for this facility. And we plan to make sure that we provide the bang for the buck. We want to bring back economic impact. The economic impact currently for College of the Albemarle is $105.3 million per year. So we spread that out over seven counties, obviously, but the more educational opportunities we can bring to an area, the more the economic impact, the more return on investment that the county has made in us.
Current legislation in North Carolina requires that all students take Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3, along with the fourth math course. I want you to take a look at Math 3, which is Algebra II, Trig, and Precalc. So all students are required. Now, a principal can exempt a student currently from the Future Ready Core Math. However, the school is penalized under the state accountability model. Again, there's only one diploma track, and 95% of students in the district must pass Math 3 for meeting math rigor standards. So we're only proposing that the students take Math 1 and Math 2, and I'll get into that in a moment. So we only, we have 42% of high school graduates elect a post-secondary pathway currently other than a four-year university. And 34%, as mentioned earlier, of our high school graduates electing to attend a four-year university actually complete a degree within six years. So again, about one-third come out with a college degree. So what we brought forth to this board is a proposal to add a diploma track with a vocational focus, allowing them to choose a CTE pathway that leads to employment, HVAC, construction, plumbing, electrical, welding, machining. All we're doing is, we're asking that Math 1 and Math 2 remain, which is the equivalent of Algebra 1 and geometry. And we add two additional math courses. For example, Math 1, 10 or higher, or CTE-related math. Should legislation regarding Math 3 remain, consider changing the percentage from 95% to 80% passing Math 3 for proficiency. We think this will eliminate the penalty for students who are exempt from Future Ready Core. This is a barrier currently to the CTE pathway. Again, the state used to have two diploma options. We did away with that about eight years ago. We're asking for that option to be reinstated.
So what this does for, for families, it possibly changes the family tree of a lot of families for the kids to actually have something they can look forward to in school. And when they get out, they can go out and earn a living, knowing that they have a skill, a ready skill that is needed desperately in this community. What it means for the taxpayers of Currituck County is we already have the facilities and programs in place, so we don't have the expense. So we're talking about a $50 million elementary school. Just think what, what it would cost to build a vocational school or to convert another school to a vocational school in Currituck County. So it's a cost savings to the citizens of Currituck County. It's a cost savings to the parents who can get their kids in, into these programs and they graduate with a certificate or a skill where they can go to work, which is what a lot of them want to do. So there's been a lot of hard work put into this by the staffs of the two respective institutions. And the school board did approve this resolution. I guess it was a month ago, Ms. Rose?
Almost.
Yeah. And so what we're doing is, is we, at first, we were saying, okay, let's try this with Currituck and get a waiver. But we've been met with such enthusiasm from folks in Raleigh and, and the superintendent's office that we're going to ask that maybe this be a pilot program for the entire College of the Albemarle service area. So it would encompass seven counties if those other counties would like to participate. So what we would like for you to do tonight is approve that resolution so we can take that to Raleigh with us, along with the one from the school system, and hopefully start the cascading where the other communities in northeastern North Carolina would also adopt these resolutions and maybe make this a pilot program if the state's not willing to do it in all 100 counties. So tonight, we would like for you to pass that resolution. But before you do, we certainly will answer any questions that you have. I'll take the easy ones. The hard ones I'll hand off to Dr. Bagwell and Dr. Lutes. So do you have any questions?
Just, question, comments?
I'd just like to make a few comments if I could. For those of you out there that don't know or not, I mean, I also own a HVAC company in the county here for years. And last year, I was able to hire a high school graduate, and this, well, this, this year too, from Currituck County. But on another note, Currituck County started an HVAC at the college campus, an HVAC technical course, and they contacted me to ask if I would teach the, the COA's HVAC course, a portion of that, and I, and I am teaching that this, this spring. And one thing I will tell you is we have, we have Currituck High School was in that class. We have a young lady that lives, resides in this county that's not a school, but she signed up for that class. That class is so excited, and I'm excited to be able to teach, first time doing that. I, you know, I've never taught before, but it's interesting. But the, to be able to, to see that there's a need out there and a want for technical careers, and they understand the pathway and they understand the future that it can provide for them and the types of income they can get. And it's, it's exciting. And as far as the math, when I was in high school, I took four math. It wasn't required. You only required two back in the day, but I took all four because I liked math. But in the real world out there, your math, your geometry with angles, I use that in my industry, carpenters do. I can understand that's a good math to take. But after that, you know, I took trigonometry and calculus. I never use that in the trades out there. You don't use that. I mean, a good business course or something like that to help you understand how to run a business and your math, that's what these individuals need if they want to pursue that further. So I am glad to see something like this come forward. All the trades out there, this would be fantastic to, for the young adults or anybody out there that wants to get into a career path to understand they're not going to be forced into, to take and, you know, set up for four years to go to a higher education college. I mean, I'm excited to see this and be able to support something like this to take to Raleigh. And I just wanted to share a little bit about that. But it's exciting, and when we first started this seven years ago, I couldn't wait to get to this point. I'm glad we're here. So that's all I wanted to say.
And I just want to say, this is so needed as a teacher who was in the schools when the decisions in Raleigh were changed for the track. I've seen the, the toll that it's taken on our young people that do not love school. They, they don't love math. They don't love sitting in a classroom. What they do love is hands-on training that makes sense to them. And this is, this is a lifesaver for many, many young men and women in our county and beyond that will change lives. I agree with you, Mr. O'Neal. It will change lives because it gives them something that they can dig into and put their hands on and have a reason to get up, to go to school and better themselves and their family. So thank you for your leadership, Dr. Lutes, Dr. Bagwell, Mr. O'Neal, all of you. I really appreciate your work on this.
I'd like to say, I saw this presentation when I worked at the school board meeting, but they, it was a great presentation then and it was a great one tonight. It's so needed, and I love the memes on social media where you see the kid with the $150,000 of college debt, his powers cut off by the guy because he hadn't, doesn't have a job. You know, it's, it's okay to be an electrician. It's okay to be a HVAC guy, plumber, a mechanic. You know, and I don't know where we went from, that's not okay. I have two diesel mechanics in my family, two of my sons. I have a boat captain. And then I have one that runs my day-to-day operation at my landscaping company. My two diesel mechanics, they laugh at my pay. My boat captain's not far from it, and I have two college degrees, but that does, you know, the, the trade school is where it's at. I mean, like you said, just as Commissioner Payment said, I'm very glad and, you know, somebody in Raleigh thought it might have been a good idea. Well, they were wrong. So, I mean, and we're, Currituck County is the leader to say, hey, you're wrong. So, but I'm glad that, that I support this 2,000%. Like I said, my one diesel mechanic, his, I mean, it's, it's, he's 26, and I mean, he destroys dad on what he makes a year. And my 20-year-old was offered a job at $37 an hour. He's 20. 37, 25. It was a long ride from home for him to go to Hampton, but I mean, the kid's going to come out not even, couldn't even buy a beer and could make $85,000, $100,000 a year, not even sneezing. So it is needed. Kudos to y'all, the school board, everybody. I endorse it, support it, and make a motion for it, whatever, if anybody's got any other questions.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
To approve it.
But, but first, I'll let, or, 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 or,[1728.54] aren't going to be able to do it all. And we need that human element there. And I support it 100%.
Well, this is going to put parents back in the educational decisions for their family with their kids, is what this is going to do, whereas before, it didn't matter. So this just offers another option to the parents and, and their children.
That's a great thing. I went that path, and look where I'm at today. Ended up sitting up here, thinking, couldn't find a better job than being chairman of the 40 questions. So, yeah, the only other practical math I took was accounting, and I use it every single day. So that was, that was the, my third math was accounting, so it was, it was great. All right. Well, if there's nothing further, thank you, gentlemen, for coming up this evening and for all your hard work.
I do have a question, or just a comment.
Sir, please come up to the microphone and just need us.
Name's Fred Peterson. I've been here 20 years. Got here as soon as I could. My question to you folks is, how are you going to promote what you're doing to the rest of the world? It's great that a, a child is going to go through, come out with a certificate saying, I'm an electrician. But if we only know about it here in Currituck, and there's X number of jobs, then they're competing against everyone else. Do you have a promotional plan for this? Are you going to promote, promote what we're doing here in Currituck to the outlining states, so they'll know, oh, we can come down to Currituck and hire Fred from Currituck High School, because he has this certification, and I don't have to buy, hire someone off the street and, and educate myself?
Well, I think we have someone that might answer that for you, sir.
I, I will try. I will say, you know, it's always a challenge to, to make sure we're getting the word out, but we've got to start somewhere. And this is a good somewhere to start. And so you leaned over and asked me a little earlier, does it include apprenticeships and internships and working with the businesses? Absolutely. I think that's what we're talking about. We've done a couple of things really badly in education and in, in the world of education over the last 15, 20 years. One, as we've said, everybody needs to go to four-year school to be a success. Wrong. We messed a lot of people up in the process. The other thing we do, and I think it speaks to your question, is that, and we talk about this at COA all the time, we have sprayed people out at the end of an educational pathway and said, Godspeed, go get a job, good luck to you. We need to connect students to the jobs before they get into high school, so that they can do internships, apprenticeships, and all the way through college, so that they're connected. And hopefully, the local companies are helping them get through, so that when it's time to hire the Currituck graduate, they're in a Currituck company or in the area, so that we keep folks here. Yes, sir?
All right. All right. Well, we had a sort of a motion on the table. Was there any further discussion before we move any further forward?
A second.
We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out this evening.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to recess for five minutes while we got a, we got a long one we're going to get into. So, be back in a few minutes. All right. Go ahead and get back to it then. All right. Next up on the agenda this evening is public hearings. And the first item is PB 22-12 for commercial. Dor South Development Group LLC is requesting conditional rezoning of 21.99 acre parcel from agriculture to conditional general business for the purpose, for proposed use of a shopping center without parcels. The subject property is located off Moyoc Highway, or off, in Moyoc, off Carrottoke Highway on Survey Road in the Moyoc Township. And with that, we have Mr. Kevin up this evening.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the commission. As you heard, this is a rezoning application for approximately 22 acres in Moyoc. Specifically, it is right off Survey Road, just east of the middle school. Here's a zoomed-in view. The land is currently undeveloped. Previously, it was farmland. It was a part of the Flora Farm. Site is zoned AG. As you heard, it is a request to be conditional GB. Just to look at some of the zonings around, the property just to the east is zoned conditional MXR. This is an application you'll probably remember. It came, was approved on March 1st, 2021. It was the Flora Development, which was for 277 single-family homes and a small commercial area. The properties to the north, across Survey Road and across the highway, are all zoned GB. Here is the submitted site plan from the applicant. You will see there are two commercial buildings on the site. The one to the rear of the site contains the Anchor Store. I think you mentioned it earlier. The rumor is that that is a grocery store. The rest of the spaces are a mix of retail and restaurant uses, some of the restaurants containing outdoor seating. Deb, Deb might be able to, to change the screen. All right, perfect. So the site contains approximately 120 square feet of retail and restaurant space, and that is in the two main buildings. That doesn't include the three out parcels, which are shown here. The use of the out parcels is known now, and their specific development will come down the line. As you can see, there are three access points to the site, one from Survey Road and two, into the Flora Development. The stormwater is accommodated by these two ponds, the larger of which you can see on the right side of the drawing here. I did want to mention that there is a green space, kind of a public gathering space that breaks up the parking area. This also serves as a pedestrian transition between the two, two commercial buildings. The loading spaces are in the rear of the building and not visible to, from the public right-of-way. Here, I wanted to show you a couple renderings of the proposed elevations for the building. They meet the retail design standards of Section 5.8.3C of the UDO. Just wanted to point out a few features. There are varying roof lines, varying material and color, and the use of projections and receptions in the facade that break up what is a wide facade. It also has an ample amount of fenestration along the storefronts that are adjacent to the right-of-way. The Imagine Currituck Plan designates this site as G2, which is controlled growth. Should this be approved, it will need to be an adjustment to the G3 mixed-use centers and corridors. Staff does find that this is a logical extension of the G3 that is on the other side of Survey Road and is compatible with the surrounding area. There's two applicable goals in Imagine Currituck that deal with the application. The first is Land Use Goal 3, which is to support new and existing commercial development. The second is Economic Development Goal 1, which is to support the retention and expansion of existing businesses, as well as promote the development of new businesses. The site is also located in the Moyoc Small Area Plan. It is designated as a full service, which is the appropriate designation for the proposed development. There is one policy that's relevant in the Small Area Plan, and that is Policy BI 3, which is to promote economic growth proportional to the population growth, and ensure the growth of local tax base proportional to the increased demand for public services. The Technical Review Committee reviewed this application and recommended its approval with one condition, and that is that the Imagine Currituck Plan should be officially certified by the Division of Coastal Management prior to the conditional rezoning, or any amendments to the Imagine Currituck Plan become effective.
That, that brings up a question.
Yes, sir.
Why? So we, we've approved it. We've sent it over to CAM, I guess, for final approval, right?
Correct.
So if they take a year, we've, we're holding the applicant up for a year before he could begin doing anything? Is that, if, if that's approved, if it's approved tonight? Is that correct?
Well, yes. It would be until that Imagine Currituck Plan is effective, or approved by DCM, this would not be effective. What you did, what you approved from the Imagine Currituck Plan is a draft plan. It still has to go through that state certification. So to be, you know, an official certified plan, it needs that. I will give you a quick update. I think this is a good time. The draft plan, we got comments back. We addressed the comments, submitted it back to the state, and has gone out for review. So the timing is, the state said they would take, they have 45 days to complete the review and get it back to us. We have a new representative we've been working with. She's really on it, and she's assured us that it'll get done, you know, as quickly as she can. And we've had a good meeting with her. So we're hoping, you know, this is an extended process, and we will get it approved in the next several months.
So we actually under that plan now, then? Or are we under?
Yes, we review applications under the Imagine Currituck Plan.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant has agreed to three conditions of approval. The first is the one I just discussed for the TRC. The second is that up to 120,000 square feet of non-residential Flora area, and that's excluding the three out parcels. And the last condition is that the site plan and building elevations be in general conformance with the submitted drawings that you saw. Staff does feel that this conditional rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan, adopted county plans, and the UDO. It is reasonable in that it would result in logical and orderly development, would not conflict with the surrounding properties or the intent of the UDO. The planning board reviewed this and recommended approval of the application by a five-to-zero vote, saying it was consistent with the Imagine Currituck Plan, the UDO, and recommended approval with three conditions I mentioned previously. So with that, I will stand by for any more questions before the applicant comes up.
Just, this, this was the property that was originally the school board looked at for a possible school location, was it not?
Yes, that is correct.
So I guess the, the land was deemed pretty, I think it was pretty good, wasn't it, for building on it?
Highly suitable.
Yeah, highly suitable for building and all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And after that, you know, the school looked at it. That didn't come to fruition. When the Flora Track went through the major subdivision process, this parcel was specifically called out for a commercial use.
Yeah, my memory serves, the original one called for a big, much bigger shopping, town center, all that stuff there. Okay. Any, any questions? Any more comments from staff?
All right.
All right. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening. This one is not going to be as difficult as the last one, is it, Mr. Bissell?
No.
No, okay. All right.
Thank God.
All right. Thank you.
It's nicely come with something that's maybe not particularly controversial.
Right.
So as Mr. Kemp indicated, we're trying to rezone 22 acres to conditional GB for shopping center development. Should probably actually look at the site plan before I look at the elevations. This is how it kind of is oriented on the site. You've got two main commercial masses of buildings. On the upper left, you have the, the Anchor Store, which is going to look like this from the road. Then you have this other massing of buildings on the right side that is going to look something like this. And what we have done here is to take the time to look at the building placement, to look at building design, to look at, you know, good site design, to incorporate some open spaces and public gathering areas, opportunities for outdoor seating for, for restaurants, and other site features. So this will have an attractive and, be an attractive and functional site. There are 11 standards that are typically looked at for conditional zoning. And I'm not going to read through them all here, but I will try to address each one of them as we go through. First being consistency with the adopted plans. As Mr. Kemp mentioned, this is consistent with Land Use Plan Goal 3 on community development and Goal 1 on promoting new business. It is also a logical extension of the existing G3 zone that covers all the land across the, the street between Survey Road and 168, and consistent with the Moyoc Small Area Plan. Not in conflict with the UDO. We will be, of course, applying for a special use permit at the next stage, and we'll meet all of the applicable standards. Changing conditions due to the population increasing, there's a need and desire for additional services. And we believe it does address a demonstrated community need. You know, there, people are constantly looking for new shopping, new dining opportunities and additional services as the population grows. We believe it's compatible with the adjacent land uses. All the land on the north side of Survey Road is already zoned GB, and has been for many years. So we are expecting this to be developed for commercial uses. The school to the west will be buffered properly. The land to the east and south is currently undeveloped, but approved for development as part of the planned community. We don't anticipate any adverse impacts. The site will manage drainage to the 100-year storm event. And we expect it'll have a positive economic impact. It's really the last site on this road, kind of between Foss, Flora, and the middle school. This is really an infill development that completes that development pattern. And we don't anticipate any adverse environmental impacts. No wetland impacts or wildlife. We are establishing buffers, and as I said, good stormwater management will be provided. Should be adequately served by public facilities. No impact on schools and other public facility impacts can be addressed through design and management. No adverse impact is anticipated on land values. Of course, we'll provide testimony from our appraiser at the special use permit stage, but we do expect that this development will increase the value of nearby properties. We do believe it's in the public interest and in harmony with the UDO. I would believe that it meets all of the standards for approval of conditional rezoning, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. I'm looking at this. Everything's good. The only thing that really struck me, looking at this, is was there any thought or consideration of Survey Road with the delivery vehicles, semis, making those sharp turns, and any traffic in there? Is that going to be a concern with that? Or is that a thought of any issues with, with, you know, if it's a grocery store, big semis coming in there regularly?
So we are proposing that Survey Road would become a three-lane widened section from, all the way from the entrance here, all the way to 168 at the southeastern.
By the south end, so nothing around.
Intersection with Survey Road and 168. We also are making a connection, actually two connections, to the proposed Flora Boulevard. As you see, does that pointer show up on your screen?
No.
Didn't last time either.
As, as we're looking at it.
Okay.
Uh-oh.
Well, now you moved.
That was dangerous.
Well, we see the mouse now, but not the picture.
Okay.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, if you just roll the, or, yeah, use.
There we go.
There we go.
All right. Okay, so anyway, we start the, the widening right here, just as you're approaching the site from the, from the west. So we'll have good, you know, good turning in and out available here. This will be a three-lane section from here all the way to 168. We also have then connections here, and this will be a, this connection will be designed specifically to accommodate truck turning radiuses here that'll be coming from a loading zone in the back and back onto Flora Boulevard and out this way.
So it was mentioned in Mr. Kemp's presentation, there is a commercial component in the Flora Development, correct?
Yes, there's a, two-and-a-half acre site directly across the street.
And what is the proximity to this development?
Actually, you can see in the, let me do this again. Right in this bottom-left corner, you can see just the, the edge of that proposed development there, so these driveways actually line up. This is directly across from the, this driveway is directly across from the two-and-a-half acre commercial.
And that development would be closer to 168. It wouldn't be directly across.
This is actually the, the western limit of that commercial property. This is somebody else's property than here.
Will any of the entrances to this area be signalized? Any indication that they'll be signalized?
The initial traffic analysis. The initial traffic analysis that we had done indicated that there will probably be a need for a signal at the, at the southeastern end of Survey Road eventually.
There's already one at the north end of.
There's already one at the north end, right.
So the signal would be at the end of Survey Road, not in and out of the shopping area?
It's possible that there could be a one, one needed there too, but they're recommending initially a four way stop intersection there.
Who's they?
The traffic consultant.
What's the total number of parking spots in the air? I mean, I, I don't really see the parking, I see the parking between the two. I, I think it just, it's confusing as to what the parking, um, there's parking on the, and I, I guess that's the west side, and then there's parking.
This year?
Yes, and then there's parking between the Anchor Store and the parcels there. Is that adequate, I guess is my question? It just seems like, I don't know, it just doesn't look like, I'm trying to visualize.
There's a calculation up here, I can't actually read it on the screen.
Neither can I.
The, the U D O actually specifies how that works, and it's actually a sliding scale. You have, you're required to provide one space per, I think, 200 square feet for the first 40,000, and then one for 300 for the next 40,000 or something, and I'm, and I'm...
Says 100, space one for 300 is for 30,000, 150 spaces, 100 spaces, 100 more spaces, 34, 394, I guess 394 is the total spaces required and provided is what it says.
And actually, the computing, community compatibility standards prohibit you from providing more than the required parking.
So the whole thing is like right at 400 parking spots. Mine probably has 100 and so on.
Just the trees just throw me off.
And it requires you'd also provide half of that parking to be set back from, not between the, the main access road and the, and the building front.
I believe you had some questions, Selena, about the par, out parcels, parcel A, B, and C.
Right.
What, are the, I guess you don't, those are going to be basically empty, are they going to be empty buildings or they're not going to be built until you actually have a need for them to be, they have, or someone could potentially buy those, I guess, right, and build a restaurant there or whatever?
Exactly, they could buy, build a bank there, they could build a restaurant there. What, what is the, due to a, kind of a quirk in the conditional zoning standards, we're required to show a potential development for those without really knowing what they're going to be, and in order to not have to bring it back and amend the conditional zoning, we're kind of showing the maximum they could possibly be developed. We would actually expect them to be developed less intensely than what you see here.
So parcels A, B, and C are separate commercial proposals, right?
Yes.
But they, if they didn't sell or whatever, they would just be open space? Or will the buildings be built to match the others?
Well, if, if and when they're developed, the, the architectural standards would be consistent with the, the other buildings.
So until they're sold, it's going to be just a blank lot, empty lot until they're sold?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. But they'll definitely be commercial.
They will be commercial, yes.
Which ones are Chick-fil-A? No, I'm just kidding. I couldn't resist.
Taco Bell.
Taco Bell, Taco Bell.
Going with the 18 space drive-through.
Right, 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 right.
I think what we're just touching on is the quirk that Mark mentioned is something that we need to take a serious look at, because they've got to go through all of this and then if they want to change something.
Got to come back.
They got to come back, time after time after time again.
Well, that's the problem with conditional. We've, we've put conditions on it, or they put conditions on it, so we, and it, it's good and bad, right?
Well, I think, I think we'd be better off in the future to look at our conditional zoning, because I'm the one that brought it forward back when and implored the county to adopt it, but I think we've outgrown it now to the standpoint that we're putting conditions out there when we should be conditioning the use or saying maybe we don't want to see this there and it's part of your conditional use permit, that you don't put X, Y, and Z here. This is a good time to just bring it up, because I think we do need to revamp our conditional use rezoning and make it easier and give flexibility to the administrator, uh, planning director to make changes in it instead of coming back and forward as board. How much time have we spent as a board?
Oh, God.
Every time a change has had to be made.
I've seen all Mark's ties, I know that. Been here enough.
He's grown gray.
He's circling back around, right. Uh, uh, well, that's something we can have a discussion about, certainly. Anything else from Mr. Bissell? All right, thank you, sir.
By the, by the way, the first one of these I ever did was chaired by Wilson Snowden in 19.
So you've been at the game a while then. All right, thank you, sir.
I don't think I had any gray though.
Right. All right, well, this is a public hearing, and we allow public comment during a public hearing. So at this time, if there's nothing from the, further from the board, I will open up the public comment, and I have Angela May signed up this evening to speak. And when you come up, we just need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Angela May.
Good evening.
And I live on Survey Road, 243 Survey Road, and I have quite a few concerns about this shopping center being on this small road. I know you want to make it bigger, it's already three lanes on one end, you just want to extend it, but traffic is going to be a nightmare. Between the middle school, a shopping center, and the new development they're going to put at the end of Survey Road, I'm never going to be able to get out of my driveway. Flooding is another one. The higher you build around us, the higher is going to come in my land when it rains, and we get pretty good rain when it comes in April, good storms. Fires, I think last year we had in April, three fires going in three places, and we had to call in different places to come in to put those fires out, if I'm not mistaken. Eagle Creek, Summit Farms, there's another one down the county, I don't remember exactly which one it was. Crime, that's more crime coming in, more houses, more businesses. I know there's just four or five of us on that road, but, you know, we like where we live. I agree, we need a grocery store, we need a pharmacy, but that's kind of a tight place to be squeezing all that in on one little road. So, I have more, but I'm just one person.
Well, thank you for coming up this evening. Have Susan Powers sign up.
Hi, my name is Susan Powers, and I live at 251 Greenview Road, which, as you know, is in Eagle Creek, and you're probably familiar with our sewage situation. One of the things I haven't heard mentioned is what's going to happen to the sewage from this new commercial development. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, all the sewage from Fost and potentially Flora is coming to our treatment plant to be treated, and we've always been told that once it's treated in our treatment plant, that it's going to be returned back to Fost and to Flora to be dispersed or whatever it is. And that has not happened yet, to my understanding. So all the sewage from Fost, all those people living there now are coming to Eagle Creek, being treated and staying in Eagle Creek. I think eventually, as more and more people move in, if this is approved, that's going to tax our system beyond what it can handle. As you know, with the sewage issues, most of the issue is not the treatment plant itself, it's our collection system going to the treatment plant, but also too, at the same time, I don't want to, to tax the system any more than it needs to be done already. So I don't, haven't seen any of these issues addressed, is what's going to happen with the sewage, obviously, if you're putting a grocery store, restaurants, that's just going to increase the, the tax, the burden on our system, and that's my concern. So thank you for letting, and I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this.
Well, we, we sort of do. That, but those are typically aren't covered at, at this point. They're just asking for permission to do, to rezone this, to do this. When they come in for their special use permit, that's when they, we have to go through the adequate public facilities portion of that, and, you know, they, they would show that they can handle the sewage here or there. By the way, how is it, how are things out there? Is it getting, is it improving?
My answer to that is it's working.
Okay.
But it's not fixed, which are two different things.
I understand that completely.
You can make something work, but doesn't mean it's fixed. So right now, it's working, it's not fixed. They seem to be doing a better job about being in the neighborhood and responding to issues, which I think has helped a great deal, so.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. I know you guys have had a terrible time up there, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, quick question on that, though. When, when it comes to that point, doesn't the state is going to be the one that's going to determine how much they can put in that treatment plant, isn't that correct? So it won't be from us, it'll actually be when they present it, the state will say yea or nay.
Right.
On the amount, and we're okay if it'll be acceptable or not.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up this evening, is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Something told me it was going to be you, sir. I do need your name and address again.
Fred Peterson, I live on Roland Creek Road. I happen to be a school bus driver, so I know the impact of increased traffic, how that will impart or impact my driving a school bus there, but not only that, but when school is let out in the afternoon, the backup of parents coming to pick up their children comes out on Survey Road. I don't think you want that road backed up by all those parents, and they get there an hour beforehand because the traffic gets so packed up, okay? So that's, to me, that's a major concern. Also, where Survey Road comes out to Currituck Highway, the eastern part, right now, there's a single stop sign, so when I'm coming down Survey Road, I make a left-hand turn, left-hand bend, stop at Currituck Highway at the stop sign, and then you hope, okay, that all the traffic coming from Moyoc will slow down to allow me to go out, come out in my bus. How is that going to affect semis, or that was brought up, going out there? So I see in the future, you're going to need a stop sign there, not a four-way stop. I heard four-way stop mentioned, okay? Just food for thought.
Excellent points, thank you.
I think the four-way stop was mentioned right at the front entrance, but I think the, the comment was made earlier that they foresee a stop light will probably have to be added at the highway section you're talking about, because I, you know, listen, I commend you, years ago, I, I had my bus license, and I actually drove a school bus at the Moyoc Middle School in the Turi Road. I mean, I'll tell you what, that's something, that's a job I don't want anybody doing, so. No, I let that go, no, 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 I just did.
They're hiring.
Oh, God, no, no.
They're hiring.
I did it one time, and I have the utmost respect for you bus drivers.
Patience is, is probably the key word in that job, right? All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Gentleman in the solid blue, and then we'll get to the plan.
Good evening, everybody. Kyle Beaumont, 204 Sunny Lake Road. I do have a few questions regarding the commercial aspect of this plan. Sir right here, he alluded to there's going to be a few restaurants, and I know some of the, the ones on the edge right here that are labeled parcel, they're going to be vacant lots. The ones that are actually labeled restaurant within the actual plan, are those going to be outfitted for restaurants initially and then sold, or are they going to just be vacant also? So that's my first question. Second question is, obviously, there's so many different aspects on, on timelines and everything, is there a general timeframe that something like this could be put up if approved? And then my last question, a few people already alluded to, will this alter the traffic plan for Survey Road? I think sir right here, he, he alluded to trucks and, you know, bringing food trucks in, and, and all this is obviously a concern. Would it even be possible for that big bend right there before you get to the highway? And if so, would state alter that, maybe lessen that bend, or, you know, alter the, the road right there? So those are just a few questions that I had regarding this plan.
Well, wider up here, a couple of things, that, yes, the road was designed to be widened, or is intended to be widened. When they come in for the next phase of this, which is a special use permit, that's when they'll lay out their plan for building timeframes, and some of that stuff will get laid out at that time. They'll bring a traffic engineer in to do analysis at that time and show what it's going to look like, they'll actually lay it out in detail. The neighborhood just, I, I want to call it south, but it's not really south, but the Fost is actually, um, part of their conditional permit was to widen and change the travel lanes coming into Survey Road where it tees up to one, to the highway there, and I believe they cannot turn left out of there. Eventually, there will be no left turn, it'll be right out only because of that, the severity of that angle and the amount of traffic. So a lot, a lot of changes will come to Survey Road when it's, when it's all said and done, and we can, we can beat the developer up too, to make him maybe go back and put a better stacking lane by the high school, if, if that's necessary, because he's going to want people to be able to get in and out of this development, and to have buses out on the road or parents out on the road for an hour are better, going to greatly affect your ability to go shopping in here and get things done. So, you know, he's, he's, he's been good to work with in the past and, and listened to people's concerns and willing to address those.
Okay.
So I hope that helps answer some of your questions.
It does, thank you.
Thank you. Still want to come up, sir?
My name's Ryan Gothier, 152 Gander Drive.
What was your last name again?
Gothier.
Thank you.
My concern, I, you know, it, I don't live over in this area, but I would definitely go shop there, and I go through there to go to Eagle Creek from time to time and go through Survey Road, and I just, in my head, I'm like, it just doesn't make sense to have a huge shopping center on that little road. Now, you said there's going to be improvements on that road, and you answered the question that that is going to be looked at a little further. I was kind of sitting back there like, is this it? Is this, once this is approved, are they, you know? So I'm glad that's going to be looked at a lot more, because I think there'll be a lot of changes you're going to have to make on that road to make this work. I'm all about getting another grocery store and a pharmacy, for sure, but yeah, that, that road, just driving down it back and forth to Eagle Creek, I just don't know how it's going to support that, the way it is with the school there, like the other gentleman mentioned. So hopefully, like you said, you can kind of beat them up to make sure that they're adding some lanes and stuff, because I do see the schools, Moyoc Elementary, they back up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's a, that's a area right now.
It's at every school in the county.
Yeah, and, yeah, they, they, you know, pick up their kids and, and that's going to be backed up, and if you got restaurants and people coming and going, and God forbid, there's an emergency or something like a fire, you know, and it's just hits all at the same time, then you're going to have a mess and be on the nightly news, and it's not going to be a good thing. So, but that was, just wanted to speak my piece about that, because.
Thank you, that's appreciated, appreciated, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
So one of the, the concerns from the community meeting, and I believe it was voiced by Ms. May at the community meeting, is the sidewalks, and so I guess my question, and this is probably from Mr. Bissell, I know there'll be sidewalks in the shopping area itself, and maybe sidewalks that, that connect the shopping center to the, the Flora development, but will there also be sidewalks along Survey Road? I'm just, I'm thinking about connectivity and how people will move from businesses on across the street and to and from this area.
Yes, the answer is we are proposing a, an eight foot multi-use path that will be all along the, all along the frontage.
Would that run all the way to?
Provide that pedestrian connectivity.
Would that run all the way to the school?
And that goes to the school site here.
So there will be an eight, and that's on the?
That's the school property line right there.
So that'll be on the, the east side, not, I'm sorry, the west side, not the water side, the sound side, I guess we should say.
Right, technically, it's the south side, because the, the... Technically, it's the south side, because the, if you look at the.
School site. Yes, it'll, it'll, it'll link up to the school.
Right.
Right.
We'll have to get some funds to get a sidewalk across the school property for them.
And it's already going to 168 the other way in connection with the Flora Farm Development.
Right.
And then, there's also pedestrian connectivity along these side streets that are connecting over to FOST.
So, this sidewalk system that you're speaking of, a multi-use path, will connect this shopping center with the school, Flora, and FOST?
Yes.
And businesses across the street?
And there'll be a.
Or the future businesses.
Future businesses, well, we'll.
Theoretical businesses.
We'll be providing a crossway here for the.
Okay.
For, you know, these businesses that have already been approved. And, you know, as I mentioned, we have had a traffic assessment done by Kim Lee Horn, which is like the, probably the premier traffic firm, and they've, and what I mentioned was their preliminary recommendations from that assessment, but they'll be expanding that to a full TIA report before the next stage.
Thank you.
Did you say you have gotten the final assessment about the traffic? Because I think that's one of the biggest concerns, is the traffic.
Right. So, it was their initial recommendation that the, that the four-way stop at the main entrance would be done. There are, some improvements are already being done at the Survey Road and 168 entrance of the southeast end there. But they are saying that it's going to warrant an analysis to see that at some point, probably a signal, a traffic signal will be warranted there as well.
Is there any concern about the, down by the school, where you turn on to the other?
They've, they've taken a look at the school, too, and actually, we had a, an additional access proposed at this location initially, and they recommended that we take that out so that it didn't interfere with that school traffic.
So, hearing what you've heard this evening with the traffic stacking, I would suggest you pass that information on to Kim Lee Horn, as they might not have that information if they weren't there at, you know, check-in, check-out time for these kids coming and going, because it certainly would affect the information and their analysis.
Okay, we'll do it.
Thank you.
If they weren't there at that time, they didn't do a true survey.
They wouldn't know, so. You know, you know what, you know what the volume of traffic potentially going in and out of the school is, but seeing it in reality and on a computer simulation is completely different, right? All right. Anything further from Mr. Bissell? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no one else who wants to speak at public comment tonight, I will close public comment and.
Can I ask one more question?
I guess I have to open, reopen public comment.
Sorry, keep talking about the traffic. Survey, survey, survey. But has that been done with the new neighborhood that's going to be built at the end of Survey Road, or is this just with the shopping center?
Ma'am, you need, can you come up to the mic a little bit so we can catch you?
I'm sorry. The new neighborhood, the traffic survey that's been done, is this including the new neighborhood that's going next to FOST?
When you say, uh, Flora, Flora?
Or Flora, yes.
Yeah.
Next to the shopping center.
Right. They'll have to, they'll have to tie it all in, because.
With that or not.
Yeah, they will have to tie it all in, because FOST is going to have a direct impact on Flora and vice versa.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, they will.
Okay. And I think what she was asking was the, when they did the analysis, traffic analysis, did they consider the floor track?
Yes, they did. It's the, it's the same traffic engineering firm that did the analysis for FOST and Flora, and they built on those studies to do this one.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Re-close the public comment, and any discussion from the board about this agenda item this evening? Any further discussion? Seen none, I'll open the floor for a motion. Don't want everybody to jump at once.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval to adopt my resolution to approve PB 2021 Flora Commercial, because the request is consistent with the amends of 2040 Vision Plan by designating this property as G3 on the future land use map. The request is consistent with Land Use Plan Goal 3 and Economic Development Goal 3, as well as the Small Areas Plan Designation of Full Service. The request is reasonable in the public's interest, because it would result in a logical and orderly development pattern. It would not conflict with the public interest and is in harmony with the purposes and intents of the ordinance. And some of the other conditions I'd like to include is conditions of approval, the Imagine Keratuck 2040 Vision Plan shall be officially certified by the Division of Coastal Management prior to either the conditional rezoning or any amendments of the 2040 Vision Plan becoming effective. Number two, up to 120 square feet of non-residential floor area excluding three out parcels. And number three, the site plan and billing. Uh, eva, eva, evaluations.
Evolutions.
Yes, okay. To be in general in conformance with primarily drawings provided.
And then, you said 120 square feet, I'm assuming you meant 120,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, 120,000 square feet, I'm sorry.
They're not going to let you build a 120,000 square feet out.
120.
Old grocery store.
120, you didn't hear the 120K I put after that, okay?
All right.
Okay.
It should be Economic Development Goal 1. He said three.
He said Land Use Plan Goal 3 and Economic Development Plan Goal 1. That was the, okay. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second? Go ahead.
I'll second.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay, thank you. All right, thank you all. Just reset here for a minute. All right. Next agenda item this evening is PB 22-21 Green Meadows Investments LLC. They have a request for conventional rezoning of 39.9 acres owned by Green Meadows Investments LLC from heavy industrial to general business. The subject property is located in Moyauk on the northeast side of Keratuck Highway and, and north of Roland Creek Road in the Moyauk Township. Got Ms. Donna Volvo, it's been a while, how are you this evening?
It's been, it has been. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a conventional rezoning application that was submitted by Green Meadows Investments, and it is, the request is to rezone 39.9 acres. The property is currently heavy industrial, and they are wishing to change that zoning to general business. Property is predominantly undeveloped and borders the Guinea Mill Canal on the far-left and/or the northwest side of the property, and Roland Creek to the rear or the northeast portion of the property. And there's a residential subdivision that is adjacent to this on the east side, and those properties are accessed by Roland Creek Road. And on the front of this property, or between this property and Keratuck Highway, is a professional office as well as an auto sales lot. Those properties are zoned general business, that is, the professional office and the auto sales lot. And the properties surrounding this piece are all zoned agricultural. So, this is a heavy industrial piece that really just sticks out on this piece of property. So, to give you some indication, this property was rezoned to heavy industrial in 1976, and it was taken from an agricultural zoning district and changed to M at that point, which was a manufacturing district. And over time, that's transitioned through the heavy manufacturing in 1989 and to what it is today, which is heavy industrial, and that happened in 2013. So, the Imagine Keratuck 2040 Vision Plan identifies this property into two land use classifications. On the front portion is the G1, which is a low-density growth designation, and towards the back of this property is O2, and that is reserve lands, something you would typically find in areas where you would be preserving them, some significant environmental properties. That G1 classification, it's intended for agricultural lands and low-density compatible rural residential growth and some small-scale neighborhood-serving commercial uses. The O2 transect is comprised of wetlands and environmentally sensitive areas, habitat areas, and even some prime agricultural lands. Appropriate uses in that area would typically be county parks or greenways, cultivated farmland, some forestry, and even some very low-density residential development. There are 11 goals and policies that are relevant to this request in Imagine Keratuck. Land use, goal number one, encourages developments to occur at densities that are applicable to their location and consider infrastructure and environmental factors. The policy 1.2 considers the small area plan and civic master plans, and policy 1.4 protects the uniqueness of the county through preservation. Infrastructure and county services, you have goal one and goal eight. Goal one ensures the sufficient services to support growth, and that is through our adequate public facilities, and us, we are to continue to, to use that as our guide. And goal eight, to ensure services stay at a sufficient level for services in our population. We have transportation goal one, and that's to improve safety, traffic flow, access, and the appearance along our major highways and roadways. And environment, there's goal one, policy 1.1, policy 3.1, and policy 4.5. Goal one is to improve the safety flow, excuse me, preserve sensitive lands. Policies 1.1 and 4.5 preserve the wetlands for their natural resilience and water quality benefits. Policy 3.1, preserve the riparian buffers. And policy 4.5 is to protect the coastal and non-coastal wetlands for their functions that they perform. Northern mainland land use policy 1.1 is to foster growth and development while maintaining the distinctive natural environment. The Moyauk Small Area Plan identifies this property as rural and conservation. It's predominantly rural, but you do have some areas of conservation along that Guinea Mill Creek on the left side of the property. The rural designation is intended to provide for low-density scattered residential and institutional agricultural and other transitional rural uses. The conservation area focuses on the protection and preservation of those significant areas like wetlands and other areas that you want to protect. We have three policies in the Moyauk Small Area Plan that are relevant to this request. Policy CC1 is to encourage development that is compatible with the rural atmosphere, the transition areas, and a small-town, main-street feel that is, be consistent with that plan. Policy ST1, that is to promote the establishment of an area dedicated to a community serving these businesses that foster the small-town, main-street feel. Policy SD2, that supports the local entrepreneurs that establish community-serving businesses that diversify the local economy. This is a wetland layer that's taken from our county GIS, and it's based on state data and indicates that there are some areas of significance that should be protected. We do not have confirmation or an actual limit line of where these areas are located. It hasn't been provided to the county. But usually, these maps are good indicators that there are areas of environmental significance found on the properties.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Ms. Volvo a question?
Sure.
How much of the property, I know it's 30, 39.9 acres, how, like, I know by the road frontage, how much of the property is, is, I guess you would say, usable, usable land?
That's not something that we have available to us yet. We haven't been provided with that wetland delineation to know how much area is actually buildable or usable. There was a prior development plan several years, years back that, that indicated, let's see, if you can see on, let me go back to the aerial.
I think I bush hogged that property, like in 2015, I want to say it was like maybe nine acres.
So, there, there's a pond in this area.
Mm-hmm.
And about this much.
Is.
Is, is open and cleared. There's some wetlands that I believe are identified on that prior plan in this area, but there are possibly some pockets of uplands in this area as well. We just don't have that information available right now. And I don't know that they're far enough long in their plans to know how much.
How much, I got you.
Back there.
Thank you.
While you got that map up, Donna, where does the Moyauk Small Area Plan, kind of southern border of it, where does it stop exactly? Is it off the screen?
Yeah, it's off the screen. So, this takes you, you can see Windchaser Way here.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, it's farther south.
Okay. And this area has been heavy commercial, basically, or heavy industrial for decades. Do you know how we ended up with it going down to this much lower? Why wouldn't it have been changed, I guess, is the bigger question? Is it just nobody ever thought about it, or, you know, we're talking about the new land use plan is put in a conservation, basically, or, or very low-density, low-growth area, and yet it was known to be industrial?
So, yes, that's, that's a really good question. The heavy industrial was placed on this property in 1976, and that was a zoning request from the then-property owners, and included the, this area down in here as well, which has since been rezoned to general business.
Is that the only side, is that the only property on that side? The rest of it's?
It is, it is. The property around it is agriculture, and you've got this area that was general business. Many years ago, there was a sawmill that was located right along this, I'm sure Owen remembers.
He worked there.
It was Farrell Brothers.
Yeah.
Sawmill.
Who's?
Farrell.
Oh.
And that's why it got that designation.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Donna, the, go, can you go back two more? Now, I know the part, like, the parcel to, where you have the car place, and then you have Ennis and Ennis and all that stuff, that's general business?
It is general business.
Okay. So, to the north of it is general business, and mainly across the road is the HI for the East Coast Demolition, the Coastal Ready Mix?
Yeah.
Right. You have some industrial zoning over here, industrial here, some general business here.
What's the new storage unit? Is that general business?
So, the new storage unit is, is located here, it's a conditional heavy industrial zoning district here.
So, they had to do to get their parking? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, self-storage facilities are required to be located in industrial zone properties So, we have the 11 items that the Unified Development Ordinance provides, and those are the items that the board can consider when they're evaluating a zoning change. Item one, it speaks to our plans and policies that are adopted by the board, includes the Imagine Keratuck and the Moyauk Small Area Plan. It also has other factors that include impacts and compatibility of the surrounding and nearby properties, land values, impacts to natural environment, and even adequate public facilities, and change conditions. So, this is a.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? You said the Small Area Plan, I thought that cut at the railroad, or like right at Falls.
No.
It goes all the way, does it go all the way to Roland Creek?
It goes beyond Roland Creek. It goes.
I kind of, for some reason, had it in my head, the same thing.
I thought it was the railroad tracks, too.
Like the train tracks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
It was.
So we have the use comparisons. This is for the HI and GB uses. These are found on, they're difficult to read, they're on your packet page 31, I believe. What you see typically with the HI uses is they're the more intense uses, and those are ones you typically find that have the compatibility issues with other non-industrial zone properties. GB uses are more customer-oriented and also allows for residential development. That's not something that's allowed in the HI district. On packet page 29, you also can find a lot size comparison between the two districts. So in the heavy industrial zoning district, you have a minimum of 80,000 square foot minimum lot size, and in the general business, it's a 40,000 square foot minimum lot size. And multifamily and single-family are not allowed in heavy industrial, and they are, single-family is allowed in heavy and in general business, but not multifamily. So this proposed request is considered a downzoning when you're thinking about it from a commercial or non-residential aspect. It is, it is a downzoning. But when we evaluate this, we are looking at those 11 criteria that are in the ordinance, and we're looking at, is it consistent with the land use plan? And we do realize that the zoning in place today is heavy industrial. These same issues exist today. But when we look at it through the rezoning, we are looking at, are there consistency issues? And we do find that with some of the goals and objectives that are in those plans, both the Imagine Currytuck and the Small Area Plan, there are some inconsistencies there. And with a straight rezoning, there's no, there's no ability to protect some of those wetland areas. With, with a conditional zoning, something that we've, we've been using for some time now, you're able to remove that development area away from those environmentally sensitive areas and target your, your development in those uplands. Unfortunately, with these straight rezonings, you're unable to do that. And that's why the conditional zoning is a more preferred application, because you have the ability to tailor your requests to fit those elements that you have difficulty with in your, with your land use plan with compatibility. You're able to expand those buffers. You're able to ask the applicant to do some other things that, that the ordinance may not specify, although those conditions have to be agreed upon between the two parties. So, you know, the board could request it, but the applicant would have to agree to it. But you're able to tailor the request when you do that. So it, it's staff's opinion that in absence of those agreed-upon conditions and a conceptual development plan, that it's, it's just not possible to determine consistency with those plans, and we would recommend denial of this application. The planning board did evaluate the request, and they did approve it with a 5-0 vote. They found that the, the request resulted in a less intensive zoning district. The future non-residential uses would have to meet a higher-quality design standard along Keratoke Highway and community compatibility standards. That is one thing that industrial uses and industrial zoning districts do not have to meet is those community compatibility standards. So it is an increase in some of those standards in the ordinance by downzoning it to general business. The request would reduce the potential for non-compatible highway-oriented industrial uses. And the Imagine Currytuck 2040 Infrastructure County Services Goal 1 and Goal 8, they found that this request was compatible and consistent with those. And they also found that the request was consistent with the Moyoc Small Area Plan, Policies ST1 and ST2, and it was reasonable and in the public interest because it would reduce the potential for adverse impacts of HI uses on nearby lands.
Donna, is there, most of the HI in Moyoc is, there's not much left. Is that a fair statement, excluding maybe the Currituck Station?
Yeah, you have, and this, this isn't a good, a good picture of all of Moyoc, but predominantly, your areas of heavy industrial are across the street, which is that Windchaser development, and even includes some of the solar, solar form.
Okay.
There's a piece right here, which is, I believe, the salvage.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, salvage.
I know you're saying we're downzoning.
It is a downzoning.
But we are allowing residential if we change it.
It would allow for residential. A single dwelling would not come back to this board, but if they did a subdivision of more than three dwelling units, it would come back to this board for, as long as we are still within that 85% capacity of our adequate public facilities, it would come back to this board.
Is the applicant, are they gonna, are they, are they speaking after?
They are.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
They could do a 10-acre exempt as well.
You could do 10-acre exempt parcels as well.
Okay. Anything further from Ms. Donna?
Yeah, it's.
It's thirty-nine point nine acres.
Thirty-nine point nine acres, but I was gonna say, like, the Highlands, I know it's not.
It's only about 10 acres.
It's under 10 acres, the Highlands.
Well, yeah, okay.
Is there one in particular you'd like to have left up for this?
Not for me personally. The gallery speaks. Thank you. Well, at this time, I'll invite the applicant up or representative. That's not you, we'll get to you in a minute. All right.
Good evening. My representative, Jason Mizell, had to leave, so I'm gonna be speaking. And I just wanted to thank the commissioners for all you do for our county and making sure our growth is strategic, so thank you very much. My name is Kaylee Bynum. My address is 497 Putn Ridge Road in Moyoc. I just wanted to clarify this because it is listed wrong. There's an error on the application summary, it has the nine and seven backwards. And I'm gonna read from my sheet because I have a lot of important things that I want to say, and if I just get up here and speak from my heart, I'll be here for, till tomorrow. So for the sake of time, I'm gonna read from my sheet. I wanted to share briefly about my business, how we came to be, where we hope to head in the next couple of years. I am the owner of Peaceful Waters Counseling and Wellness Center in Moyoc, as well as Green Meadows Investments LLC, which is a real estate holding company that Peaceful Waters will intend to lease from, and it's set up that way for liability purposes. I started Peaceful Waters in December of 2018 and officially opened my doors in January of 2019, so today, we've been in business for a little over four years. We treat every mental health condition except for psychosis and severe sexual addiction. When I started my business, it was just myself with my mom helping on occasion to answer phones. I had set my five-year goals and believed strongly that Currituck was in need of mental health services. I estimated that we would grow some and that someday I'd have a staff of three people and be able to treat approximately 200 or so clients. In my mind, that is what a rural county could sustain. Fast forward to today, we've grown faster than my wildest dreams. We not only pull clients from Currituck County, but Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Suffolk, Elizabeth City, Hertford, Edenton, Gates, Dare County, and beyond. We currently have a staff of about 20 and treat over 2,000 patients. We are the only outpatient mental health private practice in Currituck County, and to the best of my knowledge, there are not even any other mental health counselors that operate here. This means that Currituck County is essentially in a mental health desert and is even more problematic for low-income families who are unable to travel great distances to seek care. When I initially opened my business, we leased two office spaces and now have maxed out our capacity in the Rose and Wamble Building at 14 office spaces. I've even had to relinquish my office space three days a week to accommodate for an art therapist who recently joined our team. As of now, there is nowhere else in Moyoc for us to lease with a larger space. This leaves us in a predicament as we have an ever-growing waiting list of patients, but no means in which to physically grow our business, at least not locally. I would have to move to Virginia if that were the case. Therefore, I decided to purchase this 40 acres to someday be able to build a true wellness center that could support our growth. The land was in an ideal location and affordable. I secured a conventional loan to purchase the land with a five-year loan agreement. This part is, is really important. At the end of the five years, there is a balloon payment of over $250,000, which I obviously will not be able to afford. However, I am able to take advantage of the SBA's 504 program, which will allow me to refinance the land and lump in a build as well. The caveat is that they will only consider this if it's within three years from the purchase of the land and that the land is buildable and ready to go. As it stands today, with heavy industrial zoning, this is not possible. While I would love to be standing here today with a conditional zoning application, that is simply not possible. As a small-business owner who believes in operating debt-free without high-interest rates similar to the county's approach to debt, securing conceptual site plans and architectural drawings is quite expensive. In order to obtain funds at a reasonable rate, I would have to secure funding from the SBA, which brings me back to my previous point. I cannot secure funding to offer those plans until the land is buildable and usable for my intended purposes. Unless I hit the lottery, then maybe I could do that. The intended purposes do not include residential housing, nor would it put stress on the county's resources or infrastructure, and I know I'm giving you my word on that. There are, there's no residential plan for this land. If anything, building a counseling and wellness center would add immense value to the residents of this county. The services that we intend to provide include, but are not limited to, the following: counseling, psychotherapy, walk-and-talk wilderness therapy, life coaching, psychiatric med management, wellness retreats, yoga, physical therapy, essential oils, nutrition and dietary counseling, chiropractic care, massage therapy, aesthetics, infrared sauna therapy, and flotation, hydrotherapy. Our hope is that we can offer holistic care in a place for people to get well under one roof. In this build, with the guidance of Sussex Development, Timmons Group, and county officials, special consideration would be given to protect historically agricultural and wooded areas. The questionable wetland areas towards the back are intended to be used for walk-and-talk and/or equine therapy down the road. The initial build would be approximately 6,000 square feet with no out parcels and would be positioned on the footprint of the automotive site that was previously approved by the county with the previous owners and in which a wetland delineation was already conducted by the Army Corps of Engineers. And for reference, in that footprint area, it was determined to be 0.01 acres of wetlands, which is approximately 435 square feet. This footprint lies directly off the highway. I believe that the requested downzoning would improve the appearance of Keratoke Highway and would support the associated growth and increase in population that is coming to this county. It does not have an adverse impact on land values in the surrounding area and does not strain county resources or schools. It is also an ideal build to foster growth and development while also simultaneously maintaining the distinctive natural environment, beauty, and rural character of this community. It will encourage and promote community interaction, as well as ensuring the overall well-being of the valued residents of this great county. I prayerfully hope that you would consider the planning board's recommended and unanimous approval and also approve my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
The six, the six thou, how, and I know you don't have like a, I mean, I know you're in the rough, I guess, draft stages, the 6,000-square-foot building, how much, how much acreage do you feel, obviously, you're gonna have 40 acres, you know, if, how much of the acres do you think you would, would be buildable on, or do you have plans to build on, I guess, maybe is where I'm going?
Well, in my head, with parking, and Harry Davis may be able to speak better to this, that little tiny rectangle area towards the front would be like parking in the building. And then this, initially, now, one of the reasons not only was securing financing the main problem, but I am hesitant to limit myself because I don't know if this business model is gonna be 1,000% successful. And so, you know, initially here, but maybe 15 years from now, I might want something further back, but the initial goal is to build something right up front off the highway and use the remainder of the 38 acres for walk-and-talk therapy.
Anything further from the board?
Sure, sure.
And we did do quite a bit of due diligence as well.
Yeah, Harry Davis with Sussex Development, 109 Southland Haven Road, Virginia Beach, Virginia. The bulk of this site is wetlands, the bulk. And, and it's, the way it's distributed is such that it would be hard to get a larger, developable parcel on the back end. And let's see if I can do that. Essentially, if you drew a line just behind this line, straight across, the front side of that on the highway is the, the area that could be developed. And there's not much way to mitigate that, that in, in terms of, you know, going back in there and building some major office complex, it's not, you, you wouldn't be able to do it. So I think that Timmons, Jason, and Jason Mizell, and Kim Hamby laid out the original plan, and they maximized pretty much the footprint, which was in a 6,000-square-foot range. So I hope that answers your question.
It does.
Thank you. All right, is there anything further? All right, thank you very much for coming up, I appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I will open up public comment, and the first person I have signed up is Alfred Peterson.
First of all, I want to thank you very well done. You answered most of my questions before I happened to come up here. My, not only my questions, but my concerns, just coming up. How do you get that up? All right. I live on Roland Creek Road. My backyard is right on the creek that goes through there. There's actually a creek that goes down, if you turn, come down Roland Creek Road, on your left-hand side is the ditches for the road. Well, that's actually a creek. And when it rains, all the water from 168 starts coming down that creek or Roland Creek Road, and when that creek backs up, it's coming down Roland Creek Road, my house. My, my property has been flooded to the point that it gets up to the front of my doorstep, and I've got a three, three-foot rise. I'm built three foot above the ground level. That's only when it rains bad, which hardly ever happens around here, right? The other problem is high tides, floods, bad weather coming in, okay? Now I get flooding from the backside. That creek goes down to Roland Creek, all those marsh areas, wetlands. That water comes up, and that water comes up to my backyard, while it's also three foot up, okay? So that's just one issue I've got. What impact are you going to have on water flow through my house?
Hopefully not.
And that's a valid question, point, and I'm sure you will address that, and, and you're probably saying, how can, they're, they're so far over, okay? How can development there influence me? Well, when their property that they're going to develop is maybe 50 yards, 100 yards at the most from my property, and whatever they do back in that corner might influence water flow through that corner, where the corner of their property and the corner of my property meet, and that's wetlands. Well, I also know that the environmentalists are very protective of that waterway because some loggers came through, they logged out all the trees back there, and they didn't clean up their mess, and they blocked off that little stream. The environmentalists had them come back and clean up their mess, and they were not happy about it, okay, the environmentalists. I saw these guys up and hip-waders going through my backyard, and I went and questioned them, why are they there? And they told me, and I said, by all means, do what you need to do, I'm happy to see you, okay? That's one issue. You mentioned that right now, you're only going to develop a, a building right up in the, the front portion of your property, right off 168, okay? And you're going to put in trails back there and all that. And you're going to put in trails back there and all that. I hope that when you develop trails, you keep in mind that, where are you? Again, keep in mind the effect of water flow, water runoff.
We can't, yeah, just, just direct your comments to us. You can't.
Oh, okay. All right. I just want, okay?
Thank you.
And I've got a two-sided sword here. I'm here to protect that, but I'm here to encourage them to come because my family happens to have a need for you, so please come. Okay? You, you hear comedians talking about their families? I'm not a comedian, but I won't go there. I wrote some here. My three minutes almost up.
No, you're just fine. Don't worry about it.
Plugging, plugging, plugging. That's primarily it. You're, it looks like what you're going to do falls into something that I can accept. I'm just concerned about all, all that water and all. Occasionally, I hear a lot of gunshot back there, and it's just been recently posted. So I don't know, maybe a month ago, posted signs finally went up, but just this past week, I heard more gunshot. Could be coming from the other side of their property. You know, I hear the, all the explosions going off over here at the big gun range, and then all up and down my street. So, you know, I have concern about having a walkway back there when there's, could be inadvertent gunfire.
Excellent point.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
I do have one thing I'd like, and I believe in the county manager, this may be derived towards him. I know in the recent snagging clears, wasn't, and I know, I know where Mr. Peterson's resident, he's got a nice house right there on Roland Creek, towards the middle back. Wasn't that one of the ones that was, that was done in his backyard, the snag and clear? I want to say 2020?
Seems like.
Seemed like it was part of Justin's project.
That's correct.
Foss, they went clean all the way back.
I think they had to clean all the way back. That's why I was just, yeah, okay, I think, because I know that ditch had a lot of trees down, and I want to say that was cleaned up.
I'm pretty sure that's it. Yeah. And, you know, when we, when they develop this property, they're gonna have to do some stormwater modeling, and they're gonna have to put retention ponds and things of those nature to keep the water on their property and not have it run off immediately. So, it shouldn't get any worse than it is now, put it that way. That's the hope, right?
Yeah. Oh, you can have one more minute. I've mentioned, when I first came up, I've been here 20 years. I lived in a tidewater area for 40 years, retired from government service 32 years. When I retired, bought two and a half acres right there and thought, man, this is great. This is heaven. This is a nice little, you know, rural community. Hate to say it, but you're starting to look like Chesapeake and Virginia Beach.
You're not the only one that says that. So, that's what I talked about tonight in my opening comments. We're gonna, we're gonna take a look at that, see if we can slow it down a little bit. All right. Anyone else like to speak to this this evening? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. And if there's no further questions, comments from the board, open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to follow the planning board's recommendation for approval along with the policies that they mentioned to be inserted in the conditions and policy numbers. I move to recommend approval of PB 22-21 Green Meadows Zoning Map Amendment because the request is consistent with the Imagine Keratuck 2040 Vision Plan, and the request will result in a less intensive zoning district, will result in future non-residential uses that will meet higher quality design standards along Keratuck Highway and community compatibility standards of the UDO. The request will reduce the potential for non-compatible highway-oriented industrial uses. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because the request will reduce the potential for adverse impacts of heavy industrial used on nearby lands. And when you look at the list of uses that could be allowed there today, and it's been zoned this way now for 46 years, and nobody's ever really expressed an interest in doing something on this land, you could have a slaughterhouse put there, you could have an adult entertainment place put there today under heavy industrial, and several other uses. We need this type of service in Keratuck County. This is an instance where I said they don't know exactly what their business will look like 10 years from now, but it is a healthcare facility which is listed in GB, and it does join an additional, a existing GB district, and we're not spot zoning.
Commissioner Owens, would, under the small area plan, would you consider adding the policies CC1, ST1, and ST2?
I said with the policies that the planning board recommended.
That was in there.
But that was all, okay, I missed that part, okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that piece.
Got that.
I'll, I'll second his motion. I know they've been working on this for quite some time. I'll second it.
Any further discussion from the board?
I was just wondering, wouldn't this be better to address it under conditional zoning?
It would, but to the applicant's point, the time and money that they would have to spend to come before us to do conditional, hiring consultants, engineers, et cetera, et cetera, for small businesses overly burdens them, at least by her expression, and, and with the time looming over her for the SBA. It takes months and months and months to get before us to do conditional and do the special use permit.
This is a request that should fall under general business because of, it's landlocked to the.
HR.
To the north.
Rolling Creek Development.
Yep.
It's got GB there, and you got the creek and the wetlands behind it, so it can't expand but only so much, if at all.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Well, that will take a quick five-minute recess and jump back into our next agenda item and press on through this. Next up this evening in our public hearings is PB 22-17 Keratuck County has a request for a text amendment to the Unified Development Orange, Chapter 4, EU Standards to Modified Food Truck Standards. Now, Mr. Kevin Kemp, he's gonna be hanging out with us the rest of the night, I think.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. This is the first of the next four text amendments, which were all discussed at your fall retreat. This is the first one. This would apply to all food trucks in the county, and what it would do is essentially allow food trucks to operate and locate on property that is not the same as the principal restaurant. Just to give you a little background, this graphic here shows the zoning districts where food trucks are permitted. We consider that to be retail sales from a vehicle. It is permitted in the AG, MXR, GB, LB, CC, VC, LI, and HI districts.
Can you say that again?
I can say it again. It won't get any faster.
Right.
So, retail sales from a vehicle currently falls under the accessory uses. 4.3.1 is the purpose for the accessory uses, and what it says is that all accessory uses must be located on the same site as the principal use. So in order to get this text amendment, the first change is to that purpose where we list an exemption, where we say unless otherwise stated in specific standards, which then kicks it to Section 4.3.3, which are the specific standards for retail sales from a vehicle. And that is where we can identify that the vehicle does not have to be associated with a storefront restaurant or be located on the same lot as the associated restaurant. So this would allow food trucks to be located on other, you know, commercial sites. There are three applicable goals from the Imagine Keratuck Plan that deal with this text amendment. The first is economic development goal one, which is to support retention and expansion of existing businesses and promote the development of new businesses, especially those that diversify the economy. Economic development goal 3.1, which is to support the continued operation of farm stands, but what's particularly important is the local value-added products. Economic development goal four is to attract new healthcare service industry professionals and businesses.
So is this when they cut their hand at the food truck, the EMS shows up?
Well.
I'm, I'm missing the healthcare part.
Yes. Healthcare is not applicable, however, it is applicable in that it, you know, could bring new businesses to the county.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval of this text amendment, feels that is consistent with economic development goals and policies one, 3.1, and four, and it is not in conflict with the provisions of the UDO or any other county ordinances. The planning board also recommended approval by a five-to-zero vote, saying it was consistent with the goals we discussed a few slides ago. And with that, I will leave the seven text amendment review standards up and stand by for any questions.
I got a few.
Yes, sir.
What's that? All right. Any limitations on food truck? I mean, I know where they can go in the previous, the GB, the other thing. Any limitations? I mean, I have a food truck. I can park it. I don't have a food truck, but say I did. I can park it seven days a week, 24 hours. I mean, is there any type of restrictions on hours of operation or, I mean, because most of them are gonna have a generator, they're gonna have?
Well, that's addressed in the specific standards. You'll see standard number two. The vehicle and any other apparatuses are removed each day after the completion of sales. So that's where we address the hours of operation, where you can't have a food truck just permanently park on a site 24/7. At the end of their business hours, that has to be removed, and it has to go back to the location where it's stored.
So if a business, we'll use, Tractor Supply has had food trucks there. We'll use Tractor Supply for an example. So Tractor Supply opens eight to eight, nine to, or nine to.
Eight to nine.
Eight to nine. They open eight to nine, so nine o'clock, and I don't know if there's somebody before whatever, I'm just using this as a scenario. So Tractor Supply, somebody could have a food truck, if they did breakfast, lunch, dinner, they could be there for the whole 12-hour shebang.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, keep in mind, though, that they're gonna be required to adhere to the Almar Regional Health, or the Health Board standards, where they have to have a place to go to the bathroom and wash their hands, so if the business closes and they don't have that facility, they can't stay open.
That was my, that was, that was, I had that on there, too.
Okay. So, yeah, so they'll still have to follow those Health Department standards.
All right, Sue.
Does, does that mean porta potty?
They have to have a, a approved way to sanitize and wash your hands. It could be a little wash station, because we, our kids had to do that at the Bowls and Barbecue thing, so you have to have, I mean, it'd be a portable wash station, and you just have some facilities. So, and if a business will allow you to use them, that's acceptable.
That was one of my questions, too. I know, all right, I don't have a food truck, let's state that. So, but we're saying the scenario, I own a food truck, and then I go set up somewhere. Who inspect, I mean, is it a permit I have to have at the initial? Who inspects the, the initial food truck? I know Almar Regional Health does their thing, but, you know, I mean, is it inspected one time a year, or is it inspected one time for 15 years? I mean, what's the, I mean, there's more of them popping up. I have no issue with them, but I just have a lot of questions.
Right. And the regulation for those are handled by Almar Regional Health.
So they came to see me once a year when I had my restaurant.
Yes.
And I had to go through the serve safe certification class as well.
Same as regular.
And they would have to go through serve safe certification.
You were issued a certificate or permit, whatever, from them.
Unless you're the dude that's got the trailer that's serving barbecue at the Christmas parade, then not so much.
Well, I know he's got, I know he's got a Monday through Friday job. That's his weekend thing up, but like I said, that, and then I had, you answered that. All right. I own a business, let's say I'm, I'm at a Pasquotank. I own a business at a Pasquotank. I come to Keratuck County with my food truck. I don't have an objection to it. And my sales tax, my business is at a Pasquotank, my sales tax is gonna be, if I do $10,000 on a weekend of food sales, I mean, we're not, are we receiving, I mean.
Are we receiving the sales tax?
Sales tax in, in our county.
The way it has been explained to me is if the food is being prepared in Keratuck County, then we should receive those sales taxes. If it's prepared off-site, like, let's say all the food is prepared in Pasquotank County, and then the food truck comes and sells pre-prepared meals, then it would be Pasquotank County. Now, the question, you know, then would come up, how are they reporting it? Because it is up to the food truck.
Right.
You know, the onus is on them to report, you know, where they're operating and how they're operating to collect the sales tax.
Whether they're reported or not, yeah.
I just, I've had people call, and I've had people ask questions, so I'm asking questions.
Right. So that's how we understand it. Where the food is prepared, that jurisdiction should collect the sales tax, and it should be reported that way, of course. The question, is it being reported that way? We don't know.
I, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions. I've had some brick-and-mortar restaurants say that it's hurting their business that they can come in, set up, do their sales, and then leave. And there's, they're struggling to keep staff onboard and whatnot, and I'm not opposed to food trucks if we handle them in the right way, but it does create unfair competition with our brick-and-mortar restaurants.
Mm-hmm. I don't disagree with that, but the reality is they're, they're, well, they're sort of illegal use. We're trying to fix that, right?
Correct.
A lot of our brick-and-mortar restaurants have food trucks, though.
Yeah.
And I think it's, you know, in the end, if, and I'll just use my way down the southern end of the county, it's a way of getting people familiar with Coin Jack Marina, so maybe they hook them on their redneck, redneck egg rolls.
Which are.
And maybe they drive up, you know? I, I think it is, it is the thing to do now, so, you know, maybe if some of our brick-and-mortar stores, restaurants are struggling, maybe they want to get in on the food truck game.
Well, I don't disagree, but it bothers me if they're coming out of state, which they are doing now. We don't get anything from them.
That's gonna happen. I mean, the, the flip side of it is, you need them for an event, or this, or that, or the other, and we're having a hard time getting our own restaurants that do have them to show up and do business events.
I'm all for that.
Yeah. Well, they're not doing it, though. They can't, and it's, it's a byproduct of not enough people work, not wanting to be in the restaurant business, whatever, whatever the case may be, but, you know.
But look at all the businesses that come out of state into Keratuck County.
They do.
A lot of businesses.
They do. I mean, we use them.
I love you to go to Virginia to work.
They know my money in Keratuck County. Do Bowls and Barbecue.
I hate Virginia.
So, it's, it's just one of those things. The flip side of that is that they help, maybe, they maybe help a brick-and-mortar business that might not be a restaurant. You know, where would, where would you be without Dank Franks and Grandy at the, at the head shop over there? So, but they, they do, they are, they are, they play another role in our economy, and that, and that is supporting other things that are going on, whether it's an event, a restaurant maybe having, or another brick-and-mortar business maybe having. Or whether it's us, we contract with them to come in and be at our events. Of course, we're trying to do it locally when we can, but that's not always the case. At the end of the day, do we want them here or not? That's the question. I think we do.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not against them at all. I just, these are questions that I was asked.
Right. And reasonable questions. Right.
Questions that, that was brought to me by business owners as well as other. Can they park in a vacant lot?
No. No, they can't. It has to be associated with a principal use.
Who enforces that if they're parked in a.
Because it's an accessory use, it has to have a principal use.
Who enforces that if they're parked in a vacant lot?
That would be our department, Development Services.
You have to get a call, you need to call, start calling, Kevin.
No, we already do everything but OSHA violations. Come on, just kidding, don't put any more on us.
Coffee shop up there in Mayock that just showed up at the, yeah, but he's, he's at someone's lot, right? So, most of them are. They know better than to park somewhere they're gonna get run off.
Right. In practice, it does have to be a lot with a principal use, and they do have to have permission from the owner of the lot.
Their problem, as long as it'll be, they never catch them anyways.
Right. They're wheeling out, wheels up. All right. Is there anything further on this one? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I'll open public comment, there's no one signed up, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this tonight? Seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public comment, and if there's no further discussion from the board, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll move to recommend approval of P B twenty-two dash seventeen, Currituck County food trucks, because the request is consistent, consistent with Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan Economic Development Goal One, Economic Development Policy Three Point One, and Economic Development Goal Four.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Got one nay, thank you, all right.
No, I, I have no, I mean, I have no issue with the, I just have an issue.
Going to bowls and barbecue.
I, I, I work it every year.
Uh-uh, you're out.
I just had, there's going to be an enforcement issue is my, my.
I'm calling your boss.
My issue, I mean, I, I spend a lot of money at Louis Place at Coin Jack Marina, so, I mean, and it's no attack.
All right, let's move on, get out of here, staff is tired. P B twenty-two dash eighteen, Currituck County, again, request for a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter One, Section One Point Four, to exempt county and county school projects from the requirements of the U D O. Kevin, you can just stay out there and hammer through this if you want to.
All right, well, as you mentioned, this is the second text amendment that was discussed at the fall retreat, and it is a text amendment to exclude county and county school board projects from the requirements of the U D O. So there's two sections of the U D O that need to be amended to accommodate this request. The first is language added to Section One Point Four Point Two, which are the exemptions to the U D O. So here, by adding the language, development by the county or its agencies or departments and the County Board of Education, therefore, it puts the county and school projects under the listed exemptions in the U D O. The second change is to remove Section A from Section One Point Four Point Three, and this is the applicability of government unit section. So by removing that, it is no longer applicable to government units. I do want to take this opportunity to really explain how this will work in practice, because it is not in any way the county or the school's intention to not adhere to the U D O. Projects will still, you know, our expectation is that projects will adhere to the U D O as closely as possible, even such that, you know, language may be incorporated in the contracts upfront. What this is intended to do is where there's issues like setbacks or height or minor things that aren't meeting the U D O requirements, we don't want to prohibit ourselves from being able to provide that necessary service to the community. It is not intended to circumvent the stormwater issues or make it worse, and it's not intended to disregard the impact of development on adjacent properties. What it is, is, you know, the county providing a public service, being good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and providing that flexibility in county and school projects.
So, just a quick question if I may, Mr. Chairman, so this would allow hypothetically, I guess, then if, if a school project or a county building, let's say came in, they wanted to build it twenty stories, I guess, I mean, technically, this would allow that if that, you could, right?
Correct.
There's no restrictions on that.
It could be thirty-seven feet.
Well, that, yeah, okay, or thirty, yeah, but so.
Um, and again, a lot of that is handled in the, because these projects, they are clients of the county, and we have those contracts and those expectations with them set upfront, where, you know, I would hope that the county would look at a two hundred foot high school and have some objection to that.
How about this, I mean, even on the stormwater too, I mean, like I said, I'm sure, same thing, they're not going to come in and, you know, do a, a one-year storm, you know, I mean, because it would. I mean, you're going to hear that.
Well, and then that's what I had a citizen ask me, said, look, would, would this allow them to just build as high as they want to? I said, well, I guess you could, but would they, probably not.
Right. We're not building a skyscraper in County City.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you an example.
Okay.
As this, as this text amendment was coming forward, one of our engineers on a county project said, oh, well, that means we won't have to screen a certain area of a building as currently required by the U D O, and our response has been, oh, no, you do have to screen, because again, as Mr. Kemp said, the county will, as close as practicable, adhere to all the requirements of the U D O. Again, what this is intended to do is if there is a critical county need or infrastructure or facility requirement, surely we don't want to end up being prohibited from building such a project if we're like, for example, two feet into the setback, or if we need ten more feet on the height, I mean, that, that's, that's what the intent of this is.
Trust us, we're from the government, we're here to help.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's going to, it's going to take certainly management and the Board of Commissioners guidance to assure in the future that that's the case. I can tell you that that will be the case.
Right.
So long, so long as there's a, a, the current manager in the city.
All right.
All right, well, I can wrap up here just by mentioning there are ten applicable goals and policies in the Imagine Currituck Plan. I won't read through them all, I will list them, there are land use goal and policy four, and then infrastructure and county services goals and policies one, two, three, seven, seven point one, seven point three, eight, and eight point one. And lastly, parks and recreation goal and policy one point five. What a majority of these policies are centered around is the ability of the county to provide sufficient services and infrastructure for a growing population.
And one of the problems is that maybe an area won't serve as a commercial, what would be commercial, right? Because it's a governmental entity at school or whatever, but it allows us to drop into a zone that maybe wouldn't support that type of business, right?
Correct.
Okay, make it.
So staff recommended approval of this text amendment, and feels that it's consistent with the U D O and other county ordinances, and it is also consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck Plan. The planning board reviewed the application and recommended approval of this request by a four to one vote. They said it was also consistent with the goals and policies of Imagine Currituck, all the goals and policies which were discussed, and also consistent with the U D O and county code of ordinances. So with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Questions, comments? All right, I'll open the public comment section, anyone want to speak to this one? Oh, we have a, we have a winner. We have to give you, give your name and address again for the, for the record, thank you.
Ryan Gothier, one fifty-two Gander Drive. Just listening to this back there, and I was reading ahead before I came in tonight, and this one kind of stuck out to me, because it's, I don't know, it just feels kind of, ugh, I don't know, it's, it's like, you know, dictator Ryan, I set all these rules, and then I, you know, exempt myself from all these rules. So, in, I heard everybody talking, said, well, it's not to do any of that stuff, it's just for those one small exceptions, you know? Is there a way to do, to not do this? But if that came up, to come before you and say, everything's working great, but we have this one small exception, isn't there a way to do that in a way where you don't have to?
Right, I get, I get what you're coming at, uh, so part of the problem is the length of time it takes to do anything. And so we, if we need to do something, we would have to come through, do the same thing that anybody else would do, and in that process, it could drag a pro, something out four, five, six months that we need to get moving on now. And, and that's part of this, and then also, like, like I said, the, to Kevin, the, a school maybe need to be located in an area, but it's not allowed because the zoning doesn't allow for that type of use in that area, and we can't account for that, so, in every little language area, so, you know, it allows us to plop a school down over here where zoning doesn't allow, but it makes sense because all the kids are there, right? All the neighborhoods are in this area, but that's not a general business or a high intensity use area, which is exactly what a school is. So we, we have to just allow, or allow ourselves to, to avoid those things. That's what this is really aimed at, and I, and I take your point, that's why I said, trust us, we're from the government, we're here to help, right?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you've heard.
It feels like.
Two, two of the commissioners.
Well, it's just like, I mean, where he lives at, at the library, the county owns the library, if we expand it on the library and shut off some ditches behind the library and then floods his, you know what I'm saying, I mean, I, I see his, he's making a valid point.
Very valid points, absolutely, but.
Kind of opens up a lot of, uh.
It does, it has a potential for, for abuse, right? And, uh, I don't think anyone, historically, we have not had that issue here in this county, not that it can't happen in the future, and, and not that you shouldn't come out if you do see that happening, and chastise us publicly if you'd like to, public comment in front of every meeting.
So, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings up a good question, and have we ever, I guess, Mr. Kemp, have we ever had this in the past? Or any current projects where we're running into this right now?
One prime example is the new school, the proposed new school, and the height restrictions in the zoning district, where a height restriction of thirty-five feet really isn't practical for a two-story school with a gymnasium, in which case, you know, there would be two routes to go, you could go and apply for a text amendment, go through that process, or you could go in front of the Board of Adjustments. Both are lengthy and, and cost prohibitive processes.
How high would a two-story school be, need to be for?
I don't know how, the height, I know it's higher than thirty-five.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five approximate feet.
Sixty-five feet for two stories? Would be some high ceilings.
The, 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 the current design is calling for putting all the mechanical up in, up in the sea, up in the roof area.
Basically adding on a third story to do that.
Two stories and a mezzanine.
Ooh, a mezzanine, that's cool.
That's kind of what the Y M C A has over there.
How, how far is the Y M C A, with that, fifty?
I guess public safety maybe is a.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I mean, forty, if sixty-five feet, the public safety is.
There's a pertinences.
That's the tallest building in county.
But we don't have a match.
Yeah, we got to beat the roads course and crawl, no water tower. All right, any further discussion? We can, we can bat the school around when it gets to us, but it'll probably be a little too late, and we'll have to let it have its height anyway.
On the worksheet, it's P B twenty-two eighteen instead of seventeen.
Thank you, okay. I need to close public comments, is there anyone else, is anybody in the audience? So, close out the public comment, and we've had a lot of discussion on this, is there any further discussion on this? Including our work session retreat that we did in the fall. All right. Open the floor for a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to approve, I rec, I move to recommend approval of P B twenty-two dash eighteen, Currituck County Text Amendment, County Exemptions, because the request is consistent with land use goal and policy four, Infrastructure and County Services Goals and Policies, one, two, three, seven, seven point one, seven point three, eight, and eight point one, and Parks and Recreation Goal and Policy, one point five. The request is reasonable and in the public, public interest because it consist, consist, it is consistent with the U D O and County Code of Ordinances, consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and action statements of the Imagine Currituck Twenty Forty Vision Plan.
Thank you, I have a second. Thank you, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I expressed my concern when this was brought up in the fall. I've always been someone that believed the county should adhere to the same rules and regulations we make everybody else do.
Thank you.
To do this, just, to me, is a slap in the face to everybody that tries to do something good. We've got time in most of these projects to make a text amendment if necessary, to address something that might be in the case. But to come here and exempt the county from the rules or regulations we make everybody else follow, I think is wrong.
I agree with Owen.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nah, we're stalemate.
Three.
Three of three.
That Beaumont guy that left earlier.
All right.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, yes, it does. Getting ready to say that, all right. On to other things. All right, I'm losing stuff. All right, next up, we have P B twenty-two dash nineteen, Currituck County, request for, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Two, Section Two Point Three Point Six, and Chapter Four, Section Four Point Two Point Five, to modify extractive mining regulations, including public hearing, mailed notice requirements, total land area calculation setbacks, and administrative authority for expansion. You're up, Kevin.
Thank you, Chairman. This text amendment applies to both new applications and expansions for the mining operations. There are four specific items addressed with this text amendment, which I will go through now. The first is to extend the notification radius for surrounding property owners. Section Two Point Three Point Six outlines the mailing notice requirements. Currently, mining operations are treated the same as every other application with a five hundred foot radius for notification. What this text amendment would do would extend the distance only for mining operations to fifteen hundred square feet for notification. Just to note, fifteen hundred, not square feet, fifteen hundred linear feet is not a number we just pulled out of the air. This would be consistent with both the de-watering and well analysis that is required for a mining operation. So all three requirements would be the same. The second item is to clarify what land is included in the land area calculation, and what it does is it specifies that KAMA, Army Corps of Engineers Designated Wetlands and Surface Waters of the U S are not included in the area calculation for mining operations. The third item is to remove the ability to reduce setbacks. The current ordinance has a setback of one hundred feet from the property line or three hundred feet from a residence. However, that setback can be lessened to fifty feet if with enhanced landscaping or if the mining operation is adjacent to a vacant parcel or agricultural land. What this amendment does is it removes that ability to reduce the setback and just keeps the setback at a hundred feet. To give a little background, you know, buffers, oftentimes buffers will not be maintained well or will die, and the hundred feet just adds a little protection to the adjacent properties from, you know, what can be a, you know, hazardous use. The fourth and final portion of this amendment is to remove the ability of the director to administratively approve the expansion of mining activities. So if there's a mining operation right now, if they have a special use permit, have been operating for more than five years, and are in good standing with us, meaning there's no violations, the director has the ability to increase the land area up to forty percent. It can be expanded up to fifty percent, up to fifty percent does require the Board of Commissioners approval. What this amendment does is it removes the director's ability to expand, and so any expansion of the mining operation would need to be considered by this board.
Where did that come from? I don't remember us having that conversation. To, to take the ability away from you to expand, to just administratively approve that.
We, I remember having that conversation, it's just, what the basis behind it is, is the kind of use that a mining operation is, to have an administrative expansion, you know, or is it better to have any expansion be able to come in front of the public to weigh, you know, the impact of it on surrounding properties? That's really what it's about, is bringing the application forward with the public, give the public an opportunity to provide input.
Thank you.
They still, and obviously nothing with the state does their thing on all the minings and everything.
Yes.
The fifteen hundred feet is the whole property, so on the back, if something's back there, the fifteen hundred feet touches every parcel of that property.
Yep, the fifteen hundred feet for the mailing notice is taken from the property line, so from the exterior of the site, fifteen hundred feet out. So if you're touching, if that fifteen hundred feet is touching. So, if you're touching, if that fifteen hundred feet is touching another property, that property would get a notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Kind of back up again, you said you can reduce the setback to fifty feet
Yes, sir.
from a vacant parcel?
Yes, the ordinance has two provisions where setback can be reduced. One, if it's adjacent to a vacant parcel or agricultural land, and two, with an increased buffer.
But that would be
Removed.
removed, correct?
That would be removed, yes. What this text amendment would do, it would keep the hundred-foot buffer around the entire property, and it would still have the three hundred foot from a residence.
So, okay, so it would actually give a better buffer for the property, okay.
Right, this is, you know, we're really considering the impact on the adjacent properties with this proposal.
All right.
All right, can continue on. There are four items in the Imagine Currituck Plan that are relevant to this request. The first is Land Use Goal Two, which is to carefully consider the design and location of intense and possibly potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility issues. Land Use Policy two point six, which is to minimize residential development that could be exposed to harmful effects of incompatible uses. Action Item Twelve, which is to evaluate and strengthen standards for mining activity. And lastly, Environmental Goal One, to preserve environmentally significant and sensitive lands. Staff recommended approval, recommends approval of this text amendment, feels that it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck Plan, the UDO, and other county ordinances. The Planning Board also recommended approval of this text amendment by a five to zero vote, stating that it was consistent with the Imagine Currituck goals and policies, and consistent with the UDO and other county adopted ordinances.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Kemp? All right, so, open the public comment for this, if anyone would like to speak to it. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment, and if there's no further discussion, open up for a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
PB twenty nineteen.
You gotta read on the
Get to read it.
Motion sheet, yep.
Make a move for approval. I move to recommend approval of PB twenty-two dash nineteen, Currituck County, because the request is consistent with Imagine Currituck twenty forty Vision Plan, including Land Use Goal Two, Land Use Policy two point six, Action CC dash ACT dash twelve, and Environmental Goal One.
Thank you, I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I was gonna, I do have a concern about removing the administrative ability of the director to allow for the expansion, because he's going, we're gonna go through all the process of getting that expansion, if they come in and ask for it, without bringing it to the Board of Commissioners. And if he's gonna go through all the steps, I think up to the forty percent should be continued, just to keep the people coming forward on us.
They have to come up.
I mean, they don't have to come to us for the expansion.
They do, because we just remove the language, right?
They have to reclaim before they can expand.
Right.
So, the staff's gonna go through all the processes. I just think it should remain the same, that one section of it.
We'd have to put it through the whole process again, has to go back to planning, TRC, planning, all that stuff for language sake.
I think we can strike that.
Would it be substantial? Substantial change
In the wording?
To the wording, right, it went through TRC, it went through planning, and then it came to us for approval if we
If we add that back.
Remove the strike through, although it's already passed, we would have to.
Well, it's, I think it's already passed at this point.
So, it's a dead issue at this point, right?
It is.
Yeah. So, if the board wants to add that back in, we can certainly have the staff go through that again. Bring it all back to us, but.
I mean, adding, adding the
What I brought up with Kevin. Yeah, adding a staff approval, I guess the thought process is that it puts it back in front of us for review.
How often does it happen anyways? I mean.
Once a decade, maybe.
Huh?
Once a decade, maybe.
So, if it comes before, it's just no big issue.
Not often.
I'll leave my motion out there.
I don't, I'm just saying it brings me concern, because we talk about giving staff more flexibility, and here we are taking it away.
I just think it's more transparent to bring it before us. I know, down in the lower end of the county, some of the most contentious issues have been sand mining, and citizens just want to be heard sometimes, and I think this is a vehicle that we can allow that to happen. Let them be heard, let them voice their concerns.
Especially with the mine, like you said, the south end of the county, it's mighty, I've heard a lot of that too down there. Okay, so we had that, okay.
All right, doesn't look like we're gonna be solving this one tonight, though.
Did you have a motion in your second, right?
Yes, sir. I keep losing my sheet.
I flipped mine up when I was trying to write notes.
Yeah.
I did, that's done.
Yeah.
We had a motion second, and we voted for it.
We didn't vote yet.
I heard a vote, I heard you say all in favor, and then.
Then Owen said something.
He'll put that for question again.
Then I heard aye from, I think, everyone but Owen.
Did you vote?
I voted.
There was further discussion, there was just no any nays.
There was never a nay.
Okay, well then.
Well, we can't, it's dead, we voted on it, the majority spoke, four of us at a minimum voted.
Did we have to ask for a nay or no?
Five, you voted.
I mean, you can ask for any nays.
You can ask for a nay.
Yes, I would do that, because we didn't do that.
I started to ask for a nay, do we have a nay? We do not.
Okay.
Okay.
Unanimous. Thank you, all right, it's getting too long, too late. All right, next item. Kevin, make it quick, all right. PB twenty-two dash twenty, Currituck County, request for text amendment to the Unified Development Orders, Section, Chapter Two, Section Three, did we just do, no, MXR. Section three point four point six, and Chapter Four, Table four point one point one point A, Summary Use Table, to modify the allowable uses and building size in MXR, or mixed residential zoning districts.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Two minutes.
We will keep on rolling, so this text amendment modifies the MXR section of the UDO. If you'll remember, back in January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two, an application came before you by a W and J development, and that did modify the MXR district. What it did is it provided for increased size of non-residential uses and an increased intensity in the MXR. What this amendment does is it aligns the language of the MXR with the district purpose and the UDO. So, the first change is with the district purpose, and quite simply, it removes the word "very" when dealing with the intensity of neighborhood-serving commercial. Therefore, when you're looking at this increased non-residential uses that are permitted, it is now consistent with the district purpose in that it is low-intensity neighborhood-serving, not very low. The second modification is to the use table, and for this, it spells out for non-residential development greater than twenty-five hundred square feet and up to ten thousand square feet, that the commercial must be located on a major arterial, and that it be designated a full-service area. So, if the site is not designated a full-service area, it would be limited to the twenty-five hundred square feet. The third request deals with Table four point one point one A, the use table, and this does two things, first, it removes shopping center as a permitted use, and second, it strikes the asterisk that is currently next to the other uses, reason being that asterisk noted that it had to be located next to a major arterial, and that's redundant as we covered that in the previous previous section. The Imagine Currituck Plan does not provide a particular policy or dimension dimensions for the uses in the MXR district, but what it does do is provides a transect methodology for future land use maps, profiles, goals, policies, and action statements that are pertinent to land use intensity and neighborhood-serving commercial uses. Just to give you a little background, the transect methodology divides land into separate spaces, and the Imagine Currituck, there are six, there's O one, O two, G one, G two, G three, and G four. The transects that are relevant to the MXR, being that the MXR is a transitional, it's a residential and transitional zoning district, really from the lower intensity residential to, you know, a GB or more intense commercial. The applicable transects are the G one, low-density growth, G two, controlled growth, and G three, mixed-use corridors and centers. Other Imagine Currituck goals, policies, and action items that are relevant are Action Item forty-four, the location of neighborhood commercial near road intersections, neighborhood-serving facilities, and compatible commercial uses. Land Use Goal Two, the consideration of design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility issues. And lastly, Land Use Policy two point two, which is to prohibit incompatible or poorly planned commercial encroachments near residential areas. The Planning Staff, NTRC, recommended approval of this text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies and action plans of Imagine Currituck, that this amendment aligns non-residential intensities between zoning districts, and is consistent with the purpose and intent of the UDO, and will result in a logical and orderly development pattern. The Planning Board also recommended approval by a five to zero vote, stating that it was consistent with the Imagine Currituck Plan, transect policies, Action Item forty-four, Land Use Goal Two, and Land Use Policy two point two. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, open the public comment, is there anyone who would like to speak to this one in the audience this evening? I have no one signed up. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public comment. If there's no questions, comments, concerns from the board, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a move to recommend approval of PB twenty-two dash twenty, Currituck County, because the request is consistent with the Imagine Currituck twenty forty Vision Plan, including transect profiles, CC dash ACT dash forty-four, Land Use Goal Two, and Land Use Policy two point two.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing noticaries unanimously, thank you. Onto new business. Item one is board appointments. A, Alamoar Commission Regional Advisory Council, appointment of Stacy Joseph to the Regional Advisory Council.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up's the consensus, any concerns with the consensus this evening?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Kevin, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is a special meeting in the Tourism Development Authority. Number one is TDA budget amendments. Jump down to that page. Chairman's been patient, we always stick here at the end of the.
And maintenance.
All right. Ike, you want to go through any of this, or, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, it's.
One.
Budget amendments?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Not for me.
Nope.
I'll move to approve the TDA budget amendments, item one.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The events grant program revisions is spelled out. Any comments, anybody looked at that?
And Tamara Kugler is here to answer any questions the board might have.
I think it was pretty straightforward, the board.
She showed up, yeah.
Come on up, you got, you've been here all night, we need to give you the opportunity to speak. We know, we know you love being in front of the camera.
It's my turn to shine. One other thing to go along with the event grant program, the Tourism Advisory Board would also like to recommend that we raise the level of a hundred thousand dollars per year to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. As this program is growing, we're having more and more interest, we spent the whole one thousand, one hundred thousand last year, and they also want to make sure that the nonprofits do get that opportunity to get those grants too. So, they also have that recommendation, thank you.
All right, and I assume it's been very successful at this point, you're not running any problems? Okay, thank you. All right.
Move for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we have Business Inclusion Policy Revisions, which is more cleanup of the language.
Motion for approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Give it to Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Kevin, a motion to adjourn the TDA.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll open the special meeting of the Water Sands, Ocean Sands, Water and Sewer District Board. And item one is a budget amendment, and if everyone's had time to review that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, a motion to adjourn that board.
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.